Everyone again, seems like we're just here. I'm gonna call select board meeting to order at seven oh two on November sixteen, two thousand twenty-two. Um, we've got a one agenda meeting tonight. We're not going to do public comment at the front of the end. This public comment will only be for the agenda topic tonight, right? And so on August seventh, two thousand twenty-one, Chief Achilles and then Chief Paulus came before this like board and requested that the select board support exploring the option of regionalizing our local emergency dispatch operation. At that time, the state had made available grant funds to communities wishing to explore dispatch regionalization. The select board approved the chief's request. We've moved the seven communities, Racton, Westboro, Hudson, Huntington, Northborough, Marlborough, and Southborough, formed a working group to obtain a grant that's funded by the Edward Collins Center for Public Management to explore the ramifications of forming a regional dispatch center serving the seven communities. Representatives of seven communities, including our chief Achilles and Chelsea Melanowski and select board, met in the intervening months to provide data and feedback to the Collins Center researchers. On September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, the select board reviewed the report from the Collins Center and approved pointing to the next step in the process to decide whether to regionalize our dispatch operation. At that time, Ms. Melanowski reported that three communities, Northborough, Marlborough, and Hudson, had decided to drop out of the group. The Collins Center report was generally favorable toward regionalization and could several benefits of doing so. Um, so tonight, I'm going to turn this over to Chelsea and Chief Achilles to lead this discussion.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Um, when the fire and police chiefs approached this board in September of two thousand twenty-one to support conducting a study, I felt it was prudent to take advantage of a study funded by the state with several, several of our mutual aid partners. This was in no way attempt to try to eliminate anyone's position or diminish the importance of dispatch as part of public safety operations. It was to determine the feasibility of regionalizing. Recruitment has been a constant challenge for Southborough even prior to regionalization conversations. It takes three to four hundred hours to properly train dispatcher to be able to work independently. In the last few years, we have trained several dispatchers to only have them leave. This is not a sustainable model for the town. In addition, it has become evident that a minimum of two dispatchers on shift at a time is imperative for when multiple events occur at once, although we need to be physically responsible in doing so. We appoint chiefs to run departments and bring initiatives forward. We have both chiefs sitting in front of us tonight and ignoring their recommendation for having done nothing here to investigate this would have been irresponsible and candidly probably an indirect vote of no confidence. This study has not cost the taxpayer, taxpayers anything thus far. It was an important exercise to go through to understand if this could be a good fit for Southborough. Some may ask about the twenty million dollar building that we built and what will happen to that investment. We are over halfway through the useful life of the equipment and dispatch and have nine hundred thousand dollars in the capital plan in a few years to replace it. The room may not be used as originally intended at ten years old, but it will be repurposed appropriately if needed. Lastly, this is not something that I would want to see the town look at in five years and have less input into the location setup governance, self, sorry, setup governance or operation. There's a value in participating in building the foundation to best suit the town and our public safety official needs. Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Chief Achilles.
Well, thank you, and thank you, members of the board, members of the public, and members of town employees and different departments behind me. As was mentioned, and I, I thought tonight I would provide some historical context where we are, and I think Ms. Cook did a little bit of that. I also want to speak to our core philosophies of why, why we're looking to improve or enhance and strengthen emergency communications and how. I also have Joseph Kreen, State nine-one director, special projects here tonight. At some point in the presentation, I'd like to have him come up and speak to the regional dispatches that are located throughout the Commonwealth, individual sites such as ours, and the state's commitment and process of grants. I think that would answer a number of questions that were outstanding from our last meeting. I know Chief Newell, mayor may not be on, I know he was out today. Perfect. But I think that we'd also like to answer any questions of this board and be prepared to answer any questions from any member of the public. Discuss, discuss options of public business and emergency access at the Public Safety Building. And towards the end of this, we'd like to see where we're headed, especially based on the grant cycle. I know we're in middle of November, we have some holidays, and the grant cycle for next year, and I know Director Kreen will mention this, but opens in January and closes in March. So we'd want to have some position of where we stand sooner than later. So let me start off with core philosophies, and I, again, I can't speak directly for Chief Newell. But in two thousand twenty-one, the state was really interested in, in looking into the Metro West region for regionalization of public safety access points or answering points, so nine-one ones in dispatch. That was held in July with some members of our community attending. I was unable to attend. But there was an emphasis and encouragement to seek those opportunities. That came on the heels of then Chief Paulus and I were looking at opportunities to strengthen our emergency communication center. I came here three years ago, and that was one of my tasks for the fire department. And we realized that emergency communications in Southborough had been a little bit left behind. And we made a lot of strides in trying to enhance policies, procedures, training, at least from our side of it, that I can speak to to make that better. And I think I've reiterated this more than once, that it's, it's not a reflection on the individuals that work in dispatch. It's the system that exists, the process that we have, the resources we have, that make it often challenging. And I, speaking, you know, from experience in our community and observance, seeing some areas that we can improve upon, much like we've done in the fire. So whatever we do, and I, I will still commit to this. If, if this is not the path the select board would support, our dispatch center and our personnel need more, and our police and fire department need more. I think that's evident through the study. I think it's evident through both of our accreditation processes move through there, we have some gaps. We recognize some gaps in our standard cover document we did in two thousand and twenty and two thousand twenty-one. So it needs to be strengthened, and it needs to be more reliable and resilient. So some poor philosophies from the fire department. Whatever we do, we need to ensure timely and accurate assistance to the public. That includes pre-arrival medical instruction without interruption during a nine-one moment. Those people that have in our community a medical emergency or serious traumatic event need pre-arrival instructions, what to do. And it's imperative to me that it's not interrupted. We need to provide appropriate predictable and sustainable staffing according to national standards. And I, I think the study had mentioned it, but that's two, two around the clock with a dedicated supervisor. We need to improve call processing and unit notification times, the best practices and national standards. Uh, we need to provide dedicated emergency communications to responding personnel, ensuring critical information is transmitted and received. We also have to reduce emergency communication conflicts between the police and fire. And I think this next one kind of leads to that is we need to reduce our risk of errors and omissions that occur during multiple critical incidents. We need to provide some resiliency and reserve capacity for complex and simultaneous incidents. And we also need to reduce the delays in receiving resources. I think it's also important, whatever system we have, we maintain a quality assurance program, and we enhance, improve the credentials and education and the competency levels of all our staff. I, I think investing in whoever we have in that room or in that, that part of the process is very important. And I think we also need to provide some dedicated credential and experience oversight. Uh, we, myself as the fire chief, I know the police chief, we're not communications experts. And at times we have to be because it falls under our auspices, so those are core for the fire department, whether we decide to do a regional approach to this or we have a commitment from the town that we're going to do it in our own community. Uh, the reason we're interested in the grant process is because it provides funding opportunities and future funding opportunities for capital, operational, and training costs that I think we don't have. If there is a commitment from the community to do those things, I think that's a different story. But I know Chief Newell and I, he, he came on late in the process, but that was one of the strong considerations is how do we move this ball forward and make sure it's sustainable? So those are some of the core things. As far as the history where we're at, I think, again, Ms. Cook spoke to that. I will add just that throughout the whole process, beginning in August of last year, I know Ms. Malanowski's provided consistent updates on a regular basis of where we're at in the process. Again, I can't speak for Chief Paulus or Chief Newell, but I know I've maintained communications with our members of the fire department of what the process is, what are the things we're looking for, and again, those, those core ideas. We met again in end of August with the interested communities to see what level of commitment, and that kind of was the precursor to meeting with this board in September. Um, so there's a commitment of four communities. There wasn't a, a, to continue this process. Wherever we head, if if we're going to move forward, we're, we're, we need to look at an intermunicipal agreement so that the four communities can collaborate and submit a grant for the process. So if we don't do it between now and March, then it's another year from now. And I think that would put us in a position of what are we going to do with our dispatch? I don't, I just don't want to keep on kicking the can down the road. We have, it's something we have to address. I think for police and fire safety, the public safety, we have to do something. Again, whatever that mechanism is to get to that point, we have to decide, and I, I think we have to determine that sooner than later. At this point, I would like to just have Joseph Kreen from State nine-one come up, just look, again, show you the map, talk about the grant process, because I know there was some questions of, is it available? What does it cover? And how does it offset some of the upstart of this process? And again, we wouldn't look at regionalization as a process if we didn't have funding. So if, you know, why come up?
Evening.
So we have the map.
As you said, I'm Joseph Kreen, the director of special projects for the State nine-one department. Uh, I started with the State nine-one department in July of this year. Prior to that, I was the deputy director of a regional center on the South Shore of Massachusetts. I've been involved in public safety for about nineteen years.
You're just trying to speak up a little bit?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So right up there is the current PSAP regionalization map. Uh, as you can see, the western part of the Commonwealth is pretty well covered. There are currently thirty-one active regional PSAPs or RECs in the Commonwealth, covering about a hundred and six communities across the state. Uh, there are two in development, Acton Concord and Braintree Randolph, that are, will be starting up right around twenty twenty-five. All of the centers that you see up there are kind of taken or most took the same process that you guys are taking right now. Usability study and discussion, those are the two biggest things that need to kind of happen with any community before you decide whether or not you're going to regionalize. Um, what I have found is centers that started without having this conversation are the centers that kind of have hit roadblocks. So I commend you for, for taking this step and actually really looking into it, not kind of jumping into a blind.
Are there any questions on this, from the board on this map, because I'm going to take it down, but?
Why is it so western oriented? Why is there such a big hole where we are?
I have no solid answer for that one. If I did, it would make my job very easy. In reality, a lot of the west is covered by the state police. The state police handles a lot of the, the western Mass towns. So they have a couple of regional centers out there, Sherwin Falls, North Hampton. Uh, they kind of handle that western part. One of the things I can tell you in public safety, what I see is a lot of the good ideas and new industry trends tend to start out west before they make their way over to the east. So that really, what we see here in the Commonwealth, but the effort is still out there. All the regionals that are up and running are constantly trying to discuss with new communities. The department has up their grant program, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. You know, the grant program started in two thousand eight with the chapter two twenty-three, the acts of two thousand and eight. Then Governor DeMol Patrick signed into law, uh, which kind of started the PSAP regionalization movement. Uh, he created a grant funding program, uh, which is through everyone's cell phone surcharge. Everyone here in the Commonwealth has a cellphone. You notice that you pay a dollar fifty a month. That's where the State nine-one department funding comes from, and that's where the funding for these grants come from.
Um, so, but I don't know if you know the answer to this. Are there a lot of, I see a lot of communities that currently aren't doing anything, but are they, do you know if there's a substantial amount of them that are in investigative phase like we are? Is, is that where the trend is going?
There are communities, yes, that are in that investigative study phase. Uh, the Collins Center is who the department contracts with. Uh, there's down in the Cape, they're contracting with a few of the, the communities down there. Uh, there are other communities up in this area that are actively looking into it or in that investigative phase or trying to figure out, do we want to do a study? Is it worth doing feasibility study? Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question. I don't know if now is the right time to ask it, but one of the things that I'm interested in hearing about is are there examples of where other communities attempted formed regional centers and then ran into problems? In particular, I wanted to ask about what experience we could learn from uh, the Essex County Regional Communication Center and which I think involves Amesbury, Beverly, Essex, Middleton. So I don't know if now is the right time in the presentation.
I wouldn't know that answer, and I don't know if you do or?
I guess in terms of problems, can you give me an example?
I, I had just heard, read, read an article in the newspaper about how they started and they ran into a bunch of problems, and I don't know if it was at the management level of this center, but it's Mr. Davidson that brought it to my attention. It's something that I think that we should think about. Are there lessons that could be, that are learned from other experiences?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's funny, one of the first projects that I'm, I'm assigned is a, a study on regionalization, and I am actually in the lessons learned phase right now, trying to figure that, that out for you. Uh, I don't have an answer right now. I can tell you with the Essex County Regional, uh, it was taken over by the state. The state has run it, and it's, it's growing. Manchester by the sea is slated to be joining the other center. And some of it does come down to management. You know, I've been to, out of the thirty-one RECs, I visited fourteen and kind of have figured out that some of it, some of the problems that you ran into is the management issue. Some of it is a lack of communication. Uh, there's no communication from the start. Uh, and that's kind of that big piece. You guys are asking the right questions, you know? And that's the piece of it is we need to ask the tough questions now before you get into it, before you have assigned I N A and you're locked in and you're a year into it realizing, oh, no, this was a pick and stake. So it's good to ask the questions upfront. I can try to put you in contact with the director of PSAPs for the Commonwealth, Allison Dela Soul, and I can have her kind of walk you through some of the, the lessons learned maybe from there. Okay, that's okay, too.
I have a question related to that. If you're in the lessons learned phase, maybe he may know the answer. Are you, are you finding that when you hire a, a district manager for the R E C C or whatever is imperative to the success of the center?
Yes.
And, and when are you finding the most successful time to hire would be for that?
Right after you decide this is the road we're going.
Okay, so having that person in from the get-go?
Yes.
And then you determine your governance with that person in place? And so then you have control over the setup and, and you're in the know of what's going on?
Yeah, the governance piece, if you don't have a director by then, it's not what I've seen, the data that I've collected. It, it hasn't been a make or break situation.
Okay.
But it is nice to have that person in place so that they're not playing catch-up or you're not trying to play catch-up while you're trying to start your research.
Were you part of the one that you were in before you took the state job from the very get-go?
Uh, I came in when it was only two towns. So since I joined in two thousand fifteen with the, the Rock Regional Polycom communications center, uh, it took a town a year from two thousand sixteen on. Uh, our last town was a time to hand over, so we grew to six communities, so we moved from two to six. Uh, it's, it is a, a task to bring new communities in. Um, the lessons that I learned, being a deputy director of a regional PSAP, is that there are a lot of misinformation that's out there in terms of regional, regionalization. You know, some of that being that, oh, no one's going to know where I am at town. Uh, that's, that's false. Uh, the, the wireless capabilities of wireless technology has evolved immensely. There's programs out there, rapid SOS, uh, that provide pinpoint location to the nine-one dispatchers. On top of that, what I found is that to be successful, your regional center needs to have a ride-along program, and not just a ride-along program of, hey, we just hired you, go right around town, a continuing education ride-along program. Uh, one of the things that I installed at the Rock was that to continue your, to be certified as a dispatcher for, for the year, you had to ride with at least one of our communities every year. And you went out there and you rode the community and you spent time with the officers. But the second biggest knock on regionalization is I never get to see my dispatchers. By sending our dispatchers out to the community, it helps bridge that gap, helps put faces to the name.
So one more question. This is, I'm kind of jumping the can, but it's important. Okay, so process, is there anything that you've seen that we've done so far? So tonight, we need to make a decision as far as, I think, our next step, because of the time. Um, so this started over a year ago. Uh, there've been several meetings with the group. Um, we've got our report from the Collins Center that is a very detailed, lengthy report. We're here tonight. Is there anything else you think we have missed doing as far as making sure we've done total due diligence as far as this goes before we start talking about the next step that you see others do?
Absolutely not. You guys are following kind of the, I'll call it the playbook that I'm working on, and that is you have the public behind you right now. And when the public is not involved, that's when you start to get into these. That's where you're not doing your due diligence. Uh, you're not hearing the full picture, you know?
And we're going to take comments from the questions from public too, but this is definitely, yeah. Okay, so let's talk about what the causes might be to go the next step. If this like board were to think that we want to go for it, and that's an F, um, is the next step for the four communities to get together and try to construct a I M A that has to be done before you apply for the grant? In other words, you keep, when you go with the grant, you basically decided you want to do this, right? I mean, you're saying we want to do it, we've got an agreement with the four, um, and we're, we're ready to now, um, apply for the money to go do it.
So there's two roads you could go. Road A is what's known as a letter of attestation, which is the four communities or five communities get together, and each town manager from the community just writes a letter to the executive director of the State nine-one department, stating that they are willing to work with all the communities to look into the idea of regionalization.
Simple letter of attestation from all four.
Yes, now that puts you lower on the priority list. So the brand, the development brand, which is what really the bread and butter for PSAP regionalization, is where new reps get their startup. It's based on priorities. The top priority is existing RECs with an executed I N A. Uh, and this afternoon, there was a now, a State nine-one commission meeting. Uh, the commission voted to approve the development grant changes that the department has, has set to them. And the priority scale shifted just a little. Uh, the top priority is always RECs that are existing, bringing in a new community. The second priority is development of current RECs. And the third priority is the startup of new RECs with an I N A.
Okay, so we're still three?
Yes. Uh, with the letter of attestation, you kind of move down further, which doesn't necessarily mean you're not going to get any grant funding. It just means that you're lower on that, that scale.
But, and I, executed I M A would get us number three.
Executed I M A will put you in the third, the third tier.
Right, I want to stay on this for, for another minute to make sure we understand this process. Um, so what you said does ring a bell. So Chief Achilles, um, let a group of us down to see the Fox World, right, a couple of months ago. And the record there basically said what you just said, um, as far as one and two. But he did say, if I recall, that he didn't think that the state was funding any new RECs. The state really was urging towns to, to hook on to existing RECs. But it sounds like you're saying, no, there is a third.
No, that, that's false information. No, there is.
Because that's really important here.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the state, there is no cap or there is no determination of a thirty-one RECs, and that's it. We will support anyone that wants to start up already. Anybody out there, any community that's in white up on that screen that would like to start up a REC, great. One of the caveats is if you are next, if you're Douglas and you're next to a regional center and you say, hey, I want to start one up, we're going to make you do some homework. We're going to make you tell us why you can't go join Southern Wester County. But in terms of where you guys are, there's really no one around.
That's you're not going to make us do that?
You will not have to do any, no, your homework is done. But the state will always support PSAP regionalization. That's what we're here for. Or, or that's kind of what I'm here for. In terms of, of that area, so the fact that he's, the director there said that there's no money available, it's, it's false information. There is money available. We are supporting it. It's, it's on the third tier.
Does the third tier mean that we might not get the full thing? But what does being on third tier really mean at this point, as far as what you can tell us?
So it basically is you're the third pass. So the, the, the existing centers that are bringing a new ton in, which as of right now, uh, there are no centers as of today, as of whatever time it is right now, no centers bringing in new community for next year. That could change. There are communities that are in active negotiations with the, the SEMRECs, one of them. But they do not have an executed I N A. The department is going to be petitioning, this was announced today also at the State nine-one commission meeting, is going to petitioning the, the D T C for forty million dollars for the development grant, which is up from thirty million last year. So there's a forty, a, a, a chance that there'll be a forty million dollar fund available to, for PSAP regionalization. With no one bringing in a community right now, moves to the, the existing RECs. Um, and then after the existing RECs, it turns over to start up a new RECs.
But there are some, and they cater to.
Yes, yep.
Forty million sounds to me like not a big number for.
Uh, believe it or not, it, it, it will be the largest development. If, if approved by the D T C, it will be the largest development grant to date.
So when, when efforts commit, is it an all or nothing application?
No, no.
So you can get a partial piece of what you're?
Yeah, I can, I'll walk you through the development grant. So you decide, yeah, you can put it up.
Uh, do we, would it help if we just did the grant thing now?
Sure. So I kind of hate, but it's really important so we understand where we're trying to.
That's why I think if you see the grants, at least you'll know, and I think that will maybe spark further questions or? And while it's coming up, I, and I don't know this answer, I, because I wasn't at that. And while it's coming up, I, and I don't know this answer, I, I, cause I wasn't at that um regionalization conference, but um, and I don't know if the director can do this, but what's, why is the state trying to do this? Why are they supporting regionalization? Is there a particular reason?
Yeah, you know, in, in, in earnest here, it's, it's what's best for public safety. Um, and I, I believe I heard it when I was sitting in the back, you know, a minimum of two dispatchers. Um, it, in the interest of public safety, for me personally, I'd rather have someone dedicated to my call versus having to put me on hold to talk to an officer. Or, you know, delay me in giving CPR instructions to a loved one because they have to get my call. Uh, versus in the regional environment, there's a dedicated politics or dedicated dispatcher, uh, a supervisor there as well. And depending on how you, how big you get. You know, there's more hand, more hands make like. Um, but in reality, it's, it is to one, reduce the number of P S apps in the Commonwealth. If you, you look at it, the Commonwealth is uh, I believe, and I have, I apologize for having it off the top of my head. Uh, we, we were at one point, one of the most heavy populated P S app states out of everybody and we're pretty, pretty small compared to other states. Uh, if you look at California, they have uh limited, less number of P S apps than we do. If you look at New Hampshire, uh, they have less, less P S apps than we. Maine is in the process of reducing their P S. They went from eighty six down to twenty six. So this is a continued uh movement, I guess is what I'll call it. Uh, if you were to talk to anybody up in the western part of the country, this is how they run things up.
Thank you. I just, I thought that was important.
Um, I, I can, uh, what I'll do is I'll skip through some of the grants because you guys are already it's not part of regional, you're already uh available for them, uh, the, the support grants. So this is the, the one you're, you're already, should be already getting a support grant from the state. The the only difference is when you become a regional center, you're then eligible for the incentive piece, uh, which is a percentage of the pot or surcharge revenues. And it is anywhere for a regional emergency communication center. It's anywhere between eight and ten percent of uh that, that pot. It depends on how things kind of shake out. Uh, it's decided every year. Um, and the, the support incentive grant is based on call volume and population.
So you get that every year?
Every year you get the support incentive.
Good.
The surcharge revenue. So I'll just break up the community.
The dollar fifty.
The dollar fifty of your surcharge. So that's where, that's how the department's funded. It's funded through that surcharge. So I'm just going to make an arbitrary number up here. This isn't factual or anything. Let's just say the total number is a hundred and fifty million dollars. Uh, out of that hundred and fifty million dollars, anywhere between eight and ten percent is dedicated to the incentive. The incentive grades. And that is based on your call volume and population. So it's nine one call volume and population is how that both support and incentive is determined. Uh, the training and E and D grants, you're already eligible for as well as a uh as part of, as being a P S app. So you should already be taking advantage of those as well. Um, under S and I support incentive, what you can buy with that and what most regional centers do use it for, majority of them use it ninety nine percent solely for staffing. That's what they use it on. And the rest is uh whatever's there. Some of them use it for staffing and some console chairs, some of your staffing and uh, maybe some CAD system upgrades, uh, but most of the wrecks, a good majority of them use it for staff.
S, S and I is what?
As support incentive. So your support uh and incentive grant. So support is something that every P S app in the college is eligible for. The incentive piece is only available to regional centers.
Are we getting that money today?
Yes, we get seventy thousand grants that are, that is not in the operating budget. That's R F R twenty three.
Uh, the training grant is basically what it says it's there for. It's for training of your, your staff. Uh, and that is awarded based on the application received uh from your P S app that says, hey, this is what I need to be in compliance with five sixty, which is the C M R that runs or assess the standards for P S.
And just to be clear, the seventy is this one too. So the two are.
The one thing that's different in the training grant for regional centers is right now single stream P S apps such as yourself is only available to get sixteen hours of, of continuing education or sixteen hours of grant paid training. Regional centers are afforded thirty two hours. So an additional eight hours.
Dispatcher?
That is per dispatcher, yes. So the training grant will pay for fees for online training courses. Uh, there's a scholarship that the mass communication center supervisors uh put together uh that uh help, help send a dispatcher to a leadership training. Uh, there's training forces, whether they're hosted by the state now one department or vendor of your choice that has been approved by the state now one department. Uh, personnel costs and that covers to send someone to training or to backfill, not both. You can used to be able to do both. They decided the, the department's side decided to uh, make a differential. You can either pay to send someone to training or you can pay to fill the backfill. Uh, training materials, books, that sort of stuff. And then there's lodging for training that's more than ninety miles away and it has to be approved by the department. Emergency medical dispatch grant, all P S apps are available, eligible to apply for that grant. There are no special provisions for regional P S apps or wrecks. Uh, the E M D grant basically will pay for your emergency medical dispatch equipment. Uh, if you're computerized or card sets, it'll pay for quality assurance. Um, so if you have staff that you want to send to run through your Q A program or conduct the Q A program, it'll pay to have dispatchers come in. Uh, whether it be off hours and they can run their, their uh Q A through that, that area. It also pays what's known as a certified uh emergency medical dispatch resource, which is if you wanted to contract out E M D. Uh, you, it would pay to have someone else do it. And then lastly, and this is the big one, this is the development. Um, so this is really where regional centers kind of are able to expand, start up. Um, it's kind of how I looked at it when I was the deputy director of regional center. It's kind of my, my wish list item. So gee, I really wish I could do that, but I can't. My Cap X can't, I can't afford it through my Cap X. This is only available to regional P S apps and regional emergency communication centers. Uh, last year in F Y twenty three, it was a thirty million dollar pot. This year we are hoping to get approval from the Department of uh telecommunications and cable uh for forty million dollars. Uh, this is a competitive, a, a competitive process, um, meaning that it is basically all on your your application is completed, your project is moving forward. Uh, and it's all kind of decided, it's decided at the level of the state now on commission and the executive director of the state now on department. So what can you do with the development? These are the priorities. And as I finish this up, the department had not had the, the communicate the commission meeting. So these are the old priorities from last year, expansion, development of new. Uh, this year, as of today, the, the commission voted to approve the guy, the new guidelines, which will be published on the state now website. I'd say probably by next week. Um, and the guideline basically updating of existing regional P S apps moves up one. Everything else just kind of drops down. allowable expenses under the development grant is professional services, which cannot exceed seventy five thousand dollars. That includes operational staffing, technical governance. So if you had some sort of consultant to get you off the ground, it would pay for up to seventy five thousand dollars of that. Uh, the grant this year actually will also include a cybersecurity assessment uh under professional services, which does, uh, does not hit the seventy five thousand dollar cap. Uh, you can also use the grant for project management services. On top of that, um if we can go to the next slide. There's your transition expenses. So personnel costs for a P S app director, P S app deputy director. Um, as you start up, this will cover the cost as you bring in. Basically it will cover the cost for three years, but as you bring a new town in, three additional years get added to that. So the grant will cover your director, deputy director. Uh, basically every time you bring a new town in every three years for three years straight.
So you'd be incentivized to keep adding towns?
Yes.
And do the initial towns count as your first three years or how does that work?
I will get clarification. I do believe that's how that works. Those initial towns count as. Uh, there's key support positions that'll pay for H R, I T, finance. It all depends on what form of governance you're going to go. Um, in terms of whether or not you need those key support positions. Certified telecommunications for proposed centers. So you are what would be considered a proposed center. So this would pay for if you had to hire, which I assume you would have to hire additional staffing. Uh, it'll pay to send them through the certification process to become an hour one telecommunicator in the Commonwealth. So forty hours of the P S T one, sixteen hours of uh the telecommunicator, uh, that state now on equipment training and then the E M D program that uh you guys decide you want to go. Training costs again for proposed centers. So any training that has to get done, whether it be for new hires that you're hiring or staff from your current center that are going to be joining the regional center. Transition award. So this one is a little fun. Uh, the transition award is based on is given to the community that's going to host it. So I don't know if you are going to be a host community or if you're going to have another community host. Uh, but whoever decides to be the host community. So if you aren't going to be the host, your assessment is covered by the state for the first three years, a hundred percent. Year four, the state will cover the transition award at fifty percent. And year five, the transition award will be covered by the state at twenty five percent. Meaning you're not paying anything. Really, you're not paying a hundred percent until you're sixth year in operation.
No matter what that number is.
No matter what that number is.
Can I just ask a question about that? Cause I just, I want to make sure that for the public listening, they understand. So uh, that doesn't mean that we're not going to pay, we, we wouldn't choose to pay into some sort of capital stabilization fund so that we don't have, see a dip in operational budget and then a big upswing in year five and six. Like we would, we, we would have the opportunity to be smart about planning financially so that we plan for the future and um you know, I, I just don't want people to think that we're doing this to save money. Um, that's, that's not really what, what I think the focus of tonight is in particular. Uh, but can you talk about what towns have done financially um in those first three years and then?
So I, I can't speak for every regional in the Commonwealth. Um, I can tell you that uh, what the semrec southeastern is doing is uh, there's the assessment and then they have what's known as the special assessment. So you know, your assessment's three hundred thousand. Decide if I will, yeah, take my three thousand, put it into bank account almost.
Yeah.
Of, there it is. It's in there. Um, there are other wrecks that just, that, that start up and get going and communities just say, all right, I'll worry about paying for that. My two hundred thousand dollar assessment in, in year six. Um, or the whole two hundred thousand dollar assessment in year six. Uh, it's kind of community dependent. The state doesn't mandate anything. The state doesn't kind of let's say provide guidance, but the state doesn't kind of get their toe in that water, so to say. Um, it's all on how you guys want to proceed and what your government says.
Okay.
That's the question about this grant. Uh, I, I read the, following Andrew's question about Essex County that uh story, newspaper story that said the state is paying the full cost of that initially. I'm assuming that happens through this transition.
Uh, so the state um took over the, the Essex County, it is a state now on one P S app. Uh, so because the state cannot charge municipalities for services, uh, none of the communities there pay any sort of fee.
What did it take to have the state take us? If we misbehave in a particular.
Unfortunately, I don't have an answer to that question. Uh, the other allowable expenses through the development grant is architectural engineering. Uh, the big thing is construction, construction materials, plumbing, electrical, cabling materials, labor, other construction or structural improvements to a facility, uh, consultant services for construction. Uh, there's equipment, which is a litany list of things. I could be here until ten o'clock tonight, listing out what equipment you can buy with it. Uh, radio systems, um console furniture, uh CAD systems, anything that really helps process an hour one call, we can get under the equipment section. Uh, purchase of a building. So if you're deciding that, you know what, the best place thing to do is find a building in X town, the grant will cover, uh, pay for that piece of it. Before I get into the workshop, so that is how basically or what that grant comes. So now the process, right? That's the big question. How was the process? So you and, and the other communities decide you want to go forward. You sign your I M A, uh, you're then eligible to apply for the grant. When you file the grant in the application, you determine the priority of things. So it isn't an all or nothing. It isn't a, hey, we're putting a grant application in. It's worth five million dollars. And when you get it, the state comes back and says, nope, you get nothing. Uh, you prioritize what you think is the most important. So whether that is um you in terms of the collective governing body of the regional center or if it's a hosted environment. The director of the regional center in conjunction with speaking with, whether it be the police and fire chiefs or all of the, the boards of selectmen for the towns that want to be part of it, get together and determine, all right, what are our top priorities? How do we determine, you know, what's going to be the best piece here to move this project forward? So when it comes to a startup, if you are realizing that, okay, hey, we decide for, for last year, we decide today, this is what we're doing. We're going to go forward. We're going to start a regional center. Um, you're probably, let's just say eighteen to twenty four months up. So the staffing piece may not be needed on this. So maybe the staffing piece is my fourth priority. My top priority is getting a facility or renovating facility. So you determine what that priority piece is. You determine that scale, the, the governing body of the rec determines what is the top priority. When the department gets your application, it gets reviewed. Uh, what they have done typically in the past is kind of like a, a Regis Philbin wants to be a millionaire final answer type thing of, hey, we got your application. Are you sure this is the priority scale you want to proceed with? And you either, or what I've seen, especially what we used to do at my regional centers, just go back and make sure everything was good. Um, or yeah, hey, that's what we want. We're good. And it gets sent through and then the selection committee reviews it. Um, what I have seen is anyone that has put in for the development grant has gotten their top priority. Uh, some have gotten their top two priorities. No one has ever been denied flat out.
Give some example of the party if you're brand new, like we would be, would be to ask money for buying the building?
Buying the building, getting a director. Those are kind of the, the top two priorities for a startup.
There might be, um, the construction money.
Construct, yeah. So if you need it, so that, that's the, the big pieces. As you get ready to apply for this grant, the, the regional center would need to understand or have that idea of, all right, do I need to buy a new building or can I renovate a current existing building? If we have to buy a new building, that would be, in my opinion, that's your top priority is buying that new building. If you're renovating, your top priority is construction to get the building up and ready to go.
So we can come back the following year and ask for the next?
Yep.
Have you had a lot of success um with staffing from current local dispatch centers to regional?
Yeah, I mean, at the, the center that I was at, no one was turned away. Uh, we afforded everybody an interview. We didn't just bring everybody in. Everybody was afforded an interview process. Um, mainly it's just that safety measure of I don't want to take another center's problems. You know, or I don't want to take somebody that's not qualified for the job. Uh, but no one was turned away. Everyone was afforded an interview. Actually, the way we ran our center is any town that was coming in, they were interviewed first before we determined if we were high, needed to hire anybody from the outside. Uh, there are other centers that basically, or we're conforming, I would take it everybody. Um, I don't see any any difference to it. Aside from you're, you're losing that checks and balances side of things, but other than that, a lot of centers take it basically on the, I need that institutional watch. You know, which is key. That is, that's the institutional law of diskey.
Right.
Uh, because we would take those, the new town coming in, the staff that was coming on, we'd start them part time with us. And we would train them up on our stuff, but in conjunction, while we were training them on our stuff, they would be training our staff on how things work in community that they're serving.
Okay. I mean, I think that's one of the advantages to having it local to the towns that we're looking at it with so that we can you know, provide that opportunity uh for our current staff. I think that's, that's a big part for my position. Thanks.
The great, you don't, I don't, you don't have to do the grant workshops. They're out there. I highly recommend them. Uh, the development grant workshop is going to be still in determination. They were looking at January nineteenth. However, there may be a state now on commission meeting, so may move to the twenty sixth, uh, but it will be in the, the development grant packet that is available online. Uh, once it's published, uh, the, the date will be in there. I believe it will, G A C, the January nineteenth or January twenty sixth.
It's one day.
Uh, it's just one day and it's virtual. Uh, it used to be in person, but they, they moved it to virtual. So you go on there and the, this will walk you through the process from start to finish. Uh, the financial Karen Robitaille, who's the director of finance, uh, in her department. Uh, the financial Karen Robitaille, who's the director of finance, uh, and her department do a phenomenal job at educating, uh, whether it be new RACs or even existing RACs, uh, it is heavily attended by, by all the existing RACs plus anyone looking to start a RAC. Uh, because they, uh, do a great job of kind of going over this grant top to bottom. I gave you a very high level overview. They get really into the meeting.
Is there such a thing as a model IMA that state has available?
So in the study that you'd had from, uh, the Collin Center, there should be a model IMA attached to that. Uh, if it's not on there, I can get that.
I thought the piece of it, the double based on a ratio equal between, I don't know, call volume and population.
Yeah, that's how most centers do it. There are some centers that just do an equal fifty-fifty share. Again, it all falls on the governments. There's the district model. And there is a hosted model. The only major difference between a, a hosted model and the district model, uh, the hosted model is hosted by a town. So let's just say Southborough, hey, we're going to be the host. Um, you kind of then absorb or, or are forced to absorb all of that hiring, administration, uh, reimbursements. So if you're applying for these grants, there, some of these grants, there's, you can do, uh, you know, they're reimbursable. So you, you shell the money out and then the state will reimburse you for that funds after the goods and services have been done. Uh, the district model is, it's a gift, it's its own complete separate beast. It handles it by itself. It doesn't rely on the towns for any sort of HR legal.
So it's a separate legal.
Yeah, basically, it's a simple, separately ones.
And I can tell you with the current four communities, that's the preferred model right now. Um, but that would have to be determined.
Okay, so here's to, we've, we've had quite a bit of pushback, um, on this concept. So here's a couple of, um, threats that are, are pretty common. One is, um, so you've got a hundred six counties, I've done this, right, and thirty-one pieces. Um, of the hundred six, there is a, well, there's a concern about going dark, um, that, uh, you know, right now in Southborough, our dispatcher is basically the, uh, first person you see when you walk into our safety building. That's, that's who greets people who come in, that, that's who she is. Here she is. So of a hundred six, do you know how many actually did go dark, um, versus how many actually had a, another way to deal with the fact that the dispatcher was going to be sitting right there?
I cannot speak to how out of the hundred and six, how many are actually dark. I can tell you that the center that I was at, we had all of our stations with the exception of Hanover was a dark station. Um, and how they dealt with that is through technology. Uh, there's cameras in the lobby. There's a phone when you walk in, you pick up, it rings right at dispatch. An officer come back. Uh, Hanover had its civilian clerks, uh, excuse me, Hanson had station officers. So, uh, two out of the six stations were, were, were not, were, were not dark. Uh, the other remaining four were dark. Uh, and that was with technology. People couldn't pick a phone up that brings in the dispatch. An officer came back in.
And that's something, uh, after he finished up, I, I know, uh, Chief Newell's on, we've been exploring that, what's that option? Uh, I don't think we have to have that answer before you try for the grant, but I know that's, but I, I. But we are, um, I know in the last two months, Chief Newell's been reaching out to, uh, particularly fi- police departments that are part of regional dispatches to kind of get there, kind of general feel. Um, and again, I'll, uh, after you, Joseph said, I'll, I'll let Chief Newell speak to that.
So that's one. The second one is we've also, um, heard from various people that, um, losing the local knowledge, um, that, that we might lose that ability to truly understand Southborough, um, that our current dispatchers have, that we would be giving up a separate piece of that if we were to go the regionalization. You know, you referred to that a minute ago. We talked about the pinpoint, being a pinpoint, um, you know, a scratch on the car, whatever. So can you speak to, um, the, that as far as, um, whether you believe, believe that's correct, but it's not correct, or what do you think?
Honestly, you know, if your staff is going to join the regional center, which is, is highly encouraged, that local knowledge carries over to, to the regional center. Now, do I believe that going regional kind of does, yeah, it, it will slightly diminish that, that local knowledge. However, if you have a strong leadership in the rec that is forward-thinking, they will understand that they need to combat that process as well in terms of starting up what we started at Inductsbury, which is the ride along program. To help build upon that and help bridge that gap and take that, that piece of it out where it does become second nature. Now, it's, it's difficult to kind of ascertain whether the ride along program works or not. Um, we did, as silly as it sounds, kind of a virtual ride along where you sat at a computer with Google and you kind of went around, you learnt the main rules. Um, and, and to me, you know, outside of that, the local knowledge is something that can be taught, whether it be from your, your police and fire departments or the staff that's going to join the regional center, um, in the start.
Um, I have a question about the grant, the timing of the grant cycle. So is there, uh, any priority given to those that apply in January versus those that apply in March?
No, no priority given to when the, when they happen. So the development grant, uh, the, the workshop is in, uh, January. That's when kind of everything starts up. January is when you want to start getting all your stuff online. Any quotes you need, anything to that matter. Uh, the grant will be due, I believe it's going to be March second or March third is when the grant is due. Uh, it's due by five PM. Uh, and so there's really no, if you get it in before then, you don't move to the front of the line. I can bring that back for next year's development.
No, no, it's fine. I just was curious if that made a difference or not. Thank you.
Um, so a, a couple of things. So Chief, I, I appreciate it beginning the list of concerns and, and things that you went through. Um, you know, de- delay in, um, receiving resources. I, I think that's key, the credentials and education oversight. Um, I'm going to pick on your expertise a little bit from before you came, you know, to work with nine and one and, and going to a center. What are the top three things that you can tell us, or the top three benefits of going to a regional center in your experience?
So I mean, the obvious one is, is that cost savings. Um, but outside of cost savings, uh, it is that let more hands make, like work. Um, you have, uh, I think that's why a mother screaming on the phone that my son's not breathing. Uh, if I'm a single stream dispatcher, I have to make a determination. Am I going to sacrifice getting hands on chest to get units going? Or am I going to get hands on chest going and sacrifice a, a start of the fire? Um, so for me, it is that ability to upscale for these kind of emergencies to be dedicated to my call. Um, you know, I didn't walk into the, to the rock as a deputy director. I started as a dispatcher, then I was supervisor, the training coordinator, and then the deputy director. Uh, so I have been in these positions, especially, you know, major storms that come through. Um, we're all, we're all, uh, privy to it. It's, it, it could be a nightmare. Lines down, you have people calling left and right, wind power coming back on. Now one phone's ringing, there's a tree through my house. Um, you know, back in March two thousand eighteen, we were able to field, uh, every single call that came into our piece app without rolling anything to our alternate piece app because we had the ability to staff up and recall staff in. Um, which is, you know, okay, hey, we can do that here, but you're, you're now one positions are limited. I'm assuming you only have two now one piece apps in your, or two positions in your, in your piece app. You have all these phones ringing, being in a regional center to be able to, to, to scale for these widespread, either weather, weather emergencies or even unplanned, you know? Um, the last piece of it is, uh, the wireless direct program. Uh, when I was with the Duxbury, uh, regional center before I became the supervisor, my, at the time, uh, captain there fought tooth and nail to, to get the wireless calls into the center. Uh, and it started where, you know, calls went to the state police and then transferred into us. Um, there's that, there's that little bit of a delay there, you know, and now it speeds up. Today, if you have the now one commission, the deputy director of now one brought up that the wireless direct program is estimated to have saved about nine hundred and not, or nine hundred thousand seconds in, in getting calls out fast. So for me, it is, the cost saving is the obvious, but there's the scalability, uh, in, in that camaraderie and the teamwork that's out there to be. You know, it's not just either whether it's you're a single dispatcher in the room, um, you have other people around you to, you could learn from. You can kind of get, gain from their experiences, work together to solve problems. Um, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Um, and just a question for Chelsea and Chief Killers. Um, and you touched on this before, but I'm just going to ask again because, you know, it'll be people at home that are watching this. What, what are the benefits of getting into a regional center early versus waiting till one is sent up and then trying to get down after?
Well, I know that in our discussions with our, um, mutual aid partners, this and with Chief Newell is, um, something that was brought about success of a rec or not. Um, we, we choose, we would choose to be in the driver's seat and design what it is. Um, policies, procedures, practices, the equipment, we would be determining what that is. Um, so I think that by doing that and being on the ground floor has some distinct benefit for not each, just each town, but the dispatchers that work there. And, uh, for the police officers and firefighters in Southborough, we, we have set. Um, there's going to have to be some adaptation because you're going to collaborate with the mutual aid partners. So some things might be different. But I'd rather be on the beginning end of that. And I think Chief Newell will concur that we, we want to be on that part. The second part and, and, um, what I understand is if one exists and it's built out for four communities and we're not part of that, and there's not a level of commitment from the town to address the areas that operate administratively that we have concerns about. And two years from now, like, well, we can't get to find, we should join the rec that's in our area. Is the rec able to take us on? So we might be going, we need to join something, but there's no opportunity. And I would hate to put the community and the departments in that position where we're, it's broken and we have no opportunity to fix it. Um, or you're going to have to wait two years because three other people have already submitted some recommend request to become part of that regional dispatch. So that's my perspective. I think that's the same with the other communities that when we had our, our larger meeting, that, um, when three said they were not interested. Moving forward, the four communities that we have interest because we don't want to wait.
That's going to be an interesting discussion among the four as far as how much extra movement to build for future expansion. I mean, like, that's, that's.
I would also add that I think the, the partners, the mutual aid partners that are interested, um, we would gain the most benefit from working with. We rely on them. I don't, I don't want to say chief, but I think most, most often we rely on those towns, mutual aid. And so if you think about, um, calling nine one one and your house is on fire, right? And you can, you can keep me honest here that, um, that I'm saying this right. Um, but you call nine one one and let's say you, we need to call mutual aid. So that our dispatcher has to then call over to Westboro, Haw- Hawkeington, whoever. And then their dispatcher has to receive that information and then tone out to their own department. And so this would just cut down on that time. And so there's just, there's a great value in us going in with these particular towns and not having Westboro, Westboro and Rafton, you know, join a Worcester one or something, for example. And then let's say one pops up in, um, Hudson, and then we're forced to go to Hudson, um, and we're not with Westboro. Like, it, you know, there's, there's a lot of benefit to the ones that we use on a regular basis.
But is it, so Marlborough and Northborough aren't as regular as Westboro and Hawkeington?
Um, Westboro, Hawkeington and Ashland are on our first alarm. Our initial units, um, Marlborough is next. Um, and then it gets wider from there. But any fire we have in our community that's an actual fire, we dispatch, uh, our units and the officer, uh, in charge will request mutual aid and those are the first ones that will come. So, uh, and vice versa. We are, uh, reciprocate, reciprocate to these communities. So, um, I think we talked about this before, that that's why this group seems to be the most logical, um, and beneficial to do that. But I, I know, I, I, I want, want to make sure Joe has, Joseph has more time to just finish what he was supposed to say. And then, because I think the questions are going to start going into other areas, but. I just, I just want to make sure that.
No, thanks, Chief. But really, all that's left here is just the, what I've kind of discussed. Guidelines will be published in the next couple, couple of weeks for the development grant. Uh, the applications are due usually that first week of March. Uh, and grants are awarded by July first. Um, outside of that, the training EMD and the support incentive grant, uh, those are published as they're updated. So we, the department did their update for the development grant because that's kind of the major grant that we, we want to push out for the regional centers. Uh, now we focus on training EMD and support incentive grant guidelines. Any updates that need to happen. Um, those applications are, are due usually by the, uh, end of December. However, uh, most centers operate on that fiscal calendar. So we kind of had, at my center, everything was, all our grants were in for, all of these three grants were in, uh, by the end of June so that I could have it, or even well before June, so I could have it for July one and start paying.
So I, if it works for you, uh, uh, so, uh, Joseph's, he's under the gun. Um, if there's any questions not related to the grants or the process, I'm willing to answer those. I know Chief Newell, if he's on and he wants to, to say a few words. Um, but I know there's a number of people in the public that may want, may have questions that, uh, we're, we're open to answering. So, um.
You willing to stay with us?
I will, as long as.
I just think it's helpful because you were a dispatcher and I think you're going to appear for some dispatchers tonight, so I think you.
I just had one follow-up and then that's, that's it, Kathy. And it's a quick question. So from starting the application process, getting approved, what is the average timeframe to get a center up and going? I'm not putting you on the spot because every center's different.
Yeah.
Place to build or not.
It is, that's the big thing. So if you, if you have a place to renovate, it's all on how long it's going to take you. Um, right now, I can tell you that some of the big pain points we're having, uh, or not we're having, but what I'm seeing in the, in the dispatch world. And I'm sure the chiefs in, in the current staff at dispatch center that are working with equipment can kind of relate is that there's a long lead time to get technology. Um, the, the radio companies, Motorola, uh, there's, you put a order in today, they'll say, Eric, we'll see you in about a year and a half for, for all your stuff. So there's that piece of it that kind of plays into it. Um, if you have no place to build, you got to build a new building. You're probably looking at about twenty-four to thirty-six months, uh, to get up and operation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's it, Kathy. Thank you.
I have a question. Um, very interesting, uh, sort of mutual aid issue here in terms of, I've heard Chief Kelly's talked about. Um, and I certainly understand that, that it seems to make sense to, to, so the contiguous communities band together for that. But as I looked at the, at the map, Vex and State, there are four Vex that are not contiguous. And I'm curious, the Barcible's one of them, Old Colony, one on the North Shore and west on Chicopee. Substantial geographic spread in those. And so my question is, I mean, how does that work? As a rec without that geographic, I, I don't have any idea what their mutual aid structure is, but clearly they're not calling on communities next door for the most part.
No, so that can be a challenge by having, uh, I, I guess I'll call it an outlier. And I can speak from experience with Rochester. Uh, they were our outlier. They were forty-five miles away from, from our center. Uh, they were a different, uh, they did, they're mutually dealt with a different county as well. Um, so there's that kind of problem, there, that, there's that piece of it. Uh, so to combat that, what we kind of did to make them not feel like they were an outlier is, uh, a liaison program where our supervisors are assigned to a community and every month they go out and meet with the chiefs there. Um, in terms of the mutual aid piece, you're a hundred percent right. You know, Duxbury, Flintton, Halifax, Hanson, we're not going to Rochester. The, usually the contiguous side of things helps in terms of that mutual aid piece of, hey, I need an ambulance from the next town over. All right, I don't have to call county control or I don't have to call that next community by a phone or radio. I can just send them right up. So it speeds that concept. But as the outlier, uh, there is that piece of, I got to call county control or I have to go to, to the next town by a phone.
But I guess I, I dug around a little bit and I've seen no evidence that those four recs are somehow outliers in terms of a poor level of service or, uh, difficult operation.
No, you know, I'm, this isn't to sound crass, this isn't to sound ridiculous or not, but location, really where the rec, rec sits is, is not an issue with today's Next Gen N O One system and, and I kind of comes into. If you have a forward-thinking director that, of the center that can help. help bridge the gap of, all right, we're a little ways away from these communities, then that issue could be solved.
So again, uh, you know, mutual aid is useful there, but not a deal breaker.
But they get no benefit by being regional from a mutual aid perspective.
Understood.
Right? So I think that's part of what we're, what is important for us.
But maybe no penalty either.
I mean, a- as a resident, I would rather have Westboro on their way and, and still be talking to the dispatcher while they're coming than having the dispatcher leave me to.
If we were in a rec that was centered in Greenfield or someplace, uh, we could still have a mutual aid information with Westboro or over.
Right, but you would want to make sure that there, the dispatch is, my, our preference is the dispatcher dispatches are mutually and vice versa, so. That's, if, that would be the distinct benefit that we see and, and based on our size of our department, we rely heavily on mutually um, for any significant event in our community based on our resources.
Yep.
So I think that would be different if we were a much larger community that had more absorption of, with our full-time staff. Um, and I think also Hawkington and Westboro are kind of in the same boat.
And, and I certainly appreciate that point, and I think mutually is a critical factor to operate effectively for all these communities. But I guess I'm still struggling with uh, if you had a communication system that would connect through the rec or from one rec to another or whatever in that process to allow responding communities through mutual aid to communicate effectively one another. The physical distance is less critical than the communication connections.
I, I guess, my guess, your point would be is if the rec was in Concord, Mass.
Yeah.
We'd have to ensure that Westboro, Hawkington and us would be on, uh, out of that same location. And uh, I know this came up at our last meeting about uh, the Foxborough site. Um, I did reach out to all, remember four towns and at this point, there's still no interest in using that as our rec and all four and uh, joining that one.
In the current group that we're talking to.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Clarify in terms of Richardson goal for what's the next step in terms of where the intermedia support agreement, it sounds like you, we have to make a decision about whether you want to enter into the intermedia support agreement or just a, a letter of attestation is the thought, the letter about the station is on a lower level commitment and that's why it's.
Is it four? So within, IMA is three, right?
Yes.
One, is the letter specification of four?
Yes.
So there's only just four tiers?
Uh, there is five because there's uh, what's, what's known as a uh, regional secondary PSAP. Uh, or regional, yeah, regional secondary PSAP, so I can win. Uh, there's a couple of regional secondary PSAPs which is uh, it brings to one PSAP and it's for another community they transfer.
Sounds like.
Yeah.
So Adrian, I'm coming back, just to clarify what. So one, two, three, four, five, right? Does the money get used up in that order? So if there's nobody left, you get to three, there's nobody left?
I do, no, i- it's basically the, every, every application is reviewed uh, and determine basically it's, it's what's the narrative here, what's the project like? Uh, is the, is it a completed application? That's one of the biggest things is, is your application complete with all the guidelines? And as I said, what I've seen is everyone that has put in for the development grant, no matter where you fit on the priority scale, has gotten, whether it be priority one or priority two, they've gotten what they've kind of prioritized.
But it'd be a risk for getting less if we were to do the easy thing, the, the uh, letter versus a true, you know, sign, some delivered IMA?
Yes, that is a risk that you're so you would take.
So my recommendation, uh, Mr. Turnington is to for this board to provide some official support for IMA or not. That, and I think that needs to be done so before January. So that one, we can communicate to the other three communities that we are committed in, in trying to apply for the grant.
Are they on the same calendar that we are at this point?
I believe they are.
Have any of them committed to an IMA at this point?
Well, there, I, because we're still where we're at, I think after this meeting, if we have some better guidance, I will be reaching out to, to mutual aid partners, say, this looks where like we're going, but um, I think if we don't do anything, they're gonna, they'll have to do what they need to do.
And I'm just looking at the, the draft IMA that's, who's have done like an addendum to usability report. I mean, it's interesting because I we're starting to think, wow, that sounds really complicated, four towns negotiating and turned into a IMA. Looks like a lot of thought was put into this. Draft IMA proposes certain governance structure, et cetera. Is this a model that has been used for other community IMAs for uh, recs and speak to that, what was the process? I, I don't know if you are familiar with this.
Uh, that was done by the, the, the IMA that you're seeing is done by the, the Collin Center. Um, it's, it's not something that the State nine one department put up.
All right.
Um, but that has been, the Collin Center is who has been doing these feasibility studies.
Could you do you have some ideas about, you know, best, from your experience, best practices and things to happen in an IMA uh, that are fair, workable, et cetera?
I will tell you the IMA that you're looking at is the one.
It's the one you, you work with?
It's the one that I, it is, it's the one I would go with. It covers, it covers everything. And I, and IMA does cover, Tom does our job and covers.
And I know, just to add on to that is if we're gonna move forward, I think the town administrators from the different communities and the, the legal counsel of town council for each community would look at this and say, okay, what works within that template, what works for these four communities? So um, if, if, in the relatively near future, the decision is yes, we want to do this, then I think that's the next step with Mr. Purple and our council along with the other ones to meet and go, okay, what is, what is, what, what do we need in this so that we can officially uh, submit for the grant? And we feel comfortable that this is something we could live with, so. I would hate to, I don't want to delve too much into the IMA tonight because I, I think that it, it would be determined based on what, where are we going with this? And then the, the four towns would decide. But I think uh, Mr. Purple and the other administrators would look at that and go, what, what makes sense for us? I don't think we'd be doing it from scratch.
No, this is a very pretty sorry.
So is that it? Okay, so.
You hear from Chief Newell?
That's true.
Yeah, I know you, so it's a, um, is there anything else from the board that I can answer?
Well, let's see how, let's see how the comment goes.
No, I, I am here.
So. Hi, Chief Newell.
Hey, excuse me, hey, everybody.
We know you're under the weather, so don't waste, don't worry about.
So. Yeah.
Um, you're on, what do you want to tell us?
No, I, um, again, my, my apologies that I wasn't able to be there tonight. I just, uh, I, you know, I, I definitely feel like tonight is an important night where information is shared. I think there's um, you know, the first step in looking at our issues with um, our, our current dispatch system. Um, I, we, my dispatchers are fantastic individuals and they do an excellent job. And they need more help. Um, so I think we need to look at each avenue and think about, you know, what other, you know, what other ways can we provide them with what they need? And, you know, like, I explained to some people, you know, I kind of got into this at the very end. So I am kind of playing catch-up on a lot of this stuff, but I have been reaching out to other departments to find out, you know, what their process has been when they join um, a regional center. And um, eh, you know, everybody's different, it seems like, you know, and I think it's, it really will have to come down to what our town decides to do. Um, you know, either way, you know, I just wanted to say that um, our dispatchers need more assistance in, in handling their calls and doing what they need to do uh, for the residents. Um, and in doing that, I think we, you know, that's part of why I'm with this is that we need to explore the avenues to say that we covered all of our bases, you know, if that is going to be the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, sorry I couldn't be there tonight.
I'll leave you standing. Okay, so um, what we're gonna do is take people one at a time, so you come up to the table, introduce yourself, and go from there, so come on up.
With thirty-two Bigelow Road, also um, Vice President, the uh, police unit. So uh, I've already spoken to this briefly before. Now I understand it's more in the infancy stage, so I don't have to be quite as worked up as I was. However, that being said, um, so initially we started with uh, seven towns and now we're down to four. Who would have the answer as to why that happened so rapidly? Anybody?
I've asked the question, I think Chief Potts has the answer, so.
Sit right here with me. Let me, and I want to pre-say too, um, to uh, the Fire Chief, Police Chief and Representative here from the state. Um, things that I'll say um, have nothing to do with them. Um, I think the state's done a good job picking, I'm sorry, I forget your name, I don't want to call you that fella. Um, so um, this individual will come and represent what, you know, they're looking for. Um, Fire Chief is doing a wonderful job at, at, doing what it is he's trying to accomplish and, and, and my chief as well. Um, uh, both chiefs I have a lot of respect for, um, but it's gonna sound like I don't by the time I finish.
So um, there was a, when there was a meeting in July of last year, they were looking, state representatives, the Lieutenant Governor, representatives from nine one one were looking at the Metro West region uh, for a PSAP. So it was really focused on the communities around us, which included um, Hudson, Shrewsbury, in addition to the towns we talked Marlborough. And uh, even included Ashland. After that, there was a group of seven that decided they would want to do more and look at it further. Each one had their own interest. Uh, what was the precipitating factor? I can say, and I already spoke to what my, ours were. But uh, and I, I can't quote any of the other towns, but I think Northborough had a particular reason why they didn't want to do it, and that's why in August, uh, after almost a year of the process, they, we asked the communities, do you want to move forward? And they chose not. Marlborough, the same thing. I think they had a reason why they were doing it. And I don't think it was.
Twenty-one, not twenty-two.
Sorry, so we, it started in twenty twenty-one. And in August of twenty twenty-two, we got, had a meeting that was to determine who was in or out because we wanted to move forward, because now we have to start figuring out pause.
Unless we stayed in for a year.
Yep. So that's why I, I would respectfully say, I don't think it was abrupt. I think there was a lot of vetting out from each community. Um, and Hudson decided it wasn't, again, that's something they wanted to pursue. If you know why. Everybody has a different reason.
But do we know the reasons? So I mean, he's asking specifically.
I don't know why you'd have to, I don't want to speak for or presume what their reasons were. I, I don't think that would be appropriate. Um, I think if you want to ask their leadership of their community, I think that would be better. But I don't want to assume why they did or didn't.
And we'll just, two of these are the larger communities that just naturally the position they're in, they wouldn't be in a position to realize as much potential benefit as well. Some of the other four remaining.
Again, I can't speak to why. I can tell you, I, I just want to make sure you understood it was not, Clara, it wasn't. It was not abrupt. I'll be close.
So um, so just to, to continue with that, I think that that as a board, I think you guys would want to know that answer. Um, I, I think that would be an, an important thing to know. I don't think any assumption should be made. I think it's a question that could be asked, and yeah, they have the right to tell you, um, you know, it's none of your business, but I think it's important that you ask that. That being said, so we have four, four towns now um, dangling in the wind. And I think I would be much more comfortable as a resident going forward with something, anything. If we had any representatives from any of the other towns that are gonna be involved in this, we don't. Why are they not here? You know what I mean? If we're talking about going regional and we're talking about where other communities are at, well, we need to be able to ask them questions too. You know, we're talking about these questions as to who's gonna head it. What percentage are you gonna pay, whatever it might be? Uh, who's gonna staff it? Uh, we need to be able to ask those questions of those people as well. And we're talking about signing something and I feel like we're really being put uh, under a lot of pressure in signing something before this, this January deadline, when we don't really know where the other towns are at. So of course, me being me, I took it upon myself to call other communities and talk to dispatchers. So I talked to, and I can't say exactly who because that wouldn't be fair. But you, you know, for example, Grafton's still a community that's still in, correct? Yeah. So they're in. But then my question would be, if Grafton's still in, how come the dispatcher I spoke to had no idea of the status of what they were doing with regional or where they were going with regional, or if they were going to go regional? So if we were all in a position to move forward with regional dispatch, don't you think that those dispatchers in that community would at least know that? They don't, that's a problem. Right? I think we can all agree on that. That's, that's an issue. Because here we go, they, we're talking about maybe signing into something this evening and we don't even know where they are. Do you know where they are? Does anyone know where they are? No, I know, but no, but we're talking about it. What I'm saying is if we're talking about signing something and they don't even know what I'm talking about other than, yeah, we've heard it mentioned, but other than that, have no idea what we're talking about. That's a problem. So we could check that one off the list. Now we could be down to three. Um, I, I, I think other people might be able to speak to other communities, I don't know. That's just one, one that I happened to call because I was looking for um, detail officers for a day. So I said, why don't I ask a question while, while I'm talking? It's interesting. Um, i- it's just discouraging that, that there's again, no representatives here from those towns. We need to know where they, where they stand as well. Uh, you know, we're, we're talking about this not being about money and unfortunately, everything we've been talking about tonight is money. And, and that, and that's what we're talking about. So let's, you know, and, and again, this is where I don't want to offend you, you know, the gentleman from the state. But fewer PSAPs for the state means less money. And that's really what that boils down to, because they're not really concerned with what's happening in South Borough. They're not concerned with what's happening, you know, in, in, in uh, Hawkington, not concerned with, with any of these communities. They have a job to do and I understand that. They need to, let's narrow this down. Fewer PSAPs means less communication equipment and, and, and everything in regards to that. And plus less management, because you don't need as many people to try to manage all these PSAPs that are out there. And uh, you know, i- in the end, it streamlines it for the state and that's, that's great for them. But is it good for our community? Absolutely not for our community and, and hopefully that, that point is made. And, and, and I'm, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but let's talk about it, right? Isn't that, when it comes down to it? And, and you, and you, you're talking about coverage on dispatch and I'll get to that too. But it's, PSAP costs money. You put up these grants, it's the dangling carrot to these communities to say, oh my gosh, look at all this money we're getting in order to do this. And that's a great investment for the state because you put up all this money now to build us a building or give us these grants for training or whatever it might be. Because ultimately, it's gonna save money in the long run. That's not gonna save money tomorrow or even the next ten years, but in the long run, that's gonna save a lot of money. That's great, maybe for smaller communities, and which I won't speak to. And, you know, we were looking at that map, and as we looked at that map, and we talked about, why is it so heavy out west? It's not because things go west and then move this way, it's because those towns are this big. You got Florida, Heat, Peru, you know what I mean? What what are those towns? People don't even know they exist. So what do you do? You stick them on a a regional. You stick them on a regional with Sherwin Falls, you know? What do they have? Water, trees, eagles, and a Home Depot and a ninety-nine. You know, so that's where you put them. So you push them all together, you know? That makes sense. Community like ours, absolutely not. Um. In regards to staffing, so it's say we had a region with these four towns, so four of us total. How many people would be staffing that dispatch center at one time, at any given time? So I just want, I just want it to be accurate. So it's two or or is it four? Uh if it's in the report, what what do we have? Does anyone have that?
I'm pretty sure the report states that there's one dispatch, like director. There will be a supervisor for every shift and at minimum, day about two.
Okay, so. We've got, this is on Zoom, so we've got an audience listening to this, and if you're out there talking, they can't hear what you're saying. So we've got to keep everybody coming up to the table.
Yeah, I was hoping you had it in the report.
Hi, my name's Kylie Davis. I am the president for the Dispatch Union of Hopkinton. Um, I've read through that study, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the rec center at minimum staffing runs with a head director. There is a dispatch supervisor on each shift, each shift, so one for the day, evening, and overnight. And at minimum, there's two dispatchers on during the day. I believe it's three on the evening and two on the overnight. That's minimum staffing. And what I should stress with minimum staffing is that that's what they budget for. So at the very least, they have to run with that. There are a lot of departments that just run at minimum, because maintaining bodies, especially in this field, is very difficult. So that's what's expected. That should be expected.
So two, okay. Minimum of two on what?
So I believe it's two on days with a supervisor, three on evenings, and two on overnights. I can tell you, Hopkinton runs two twenty-four hours a day. Westboro runs two twenty-four hours a day. Southborough, I understand, is one, and I can't speak for Grafton.
So so while you're here, what where are you folks at with uh regional?
Um, to be very frank, um the town approached the board in October and gave a very blanket statement of we're interested in continuing to pursue the idea of a regional center. However, no further information has been given. Um, they did post the study on their website, but it is blanketed within the website. And the board itself doesn't know much about this process, nor does the town. And our dispatch union is currently trying to meet with our board in order to give them just the information that's within the study.
And when you say board, what board?
Board of Selectmen.
So you're saying your board of selectmen knows very little about this proposal?
Correct. Both chiefs are in favor, uh but everybody else is kind of left in the dark.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so so we're talking about staffing, you know, and so, you know, put money aside now, now we'll move on to staffing, you know. Completely agree with both the chiefs. Our dispatch definitely needs, you know, uh some assistance um in in terms of staffing. I think that's something that we can definitely accomplish in-house. Um, because now if we're talking regional, um we're talking about the the instance and 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 of a a storm, for example. Well, isn't it gonna be better? You know, more hands, you know, makes lighter work. However, if you have on the day and you have a storm coming through, and you have two people at this dispatch center, right? Storm doesn't just happen in Southborough, a storm happens in every town. So now you have four towns having a storm. So now instead of us at our current levels, which are are not enough, having one dispatcher, technically, we'd have a half a dispatcher. It it's trying to be sold that we're getting more and more for our money, and that is, that is completely incorrect. You get a little storm coming through here, whatever it might be, snow, snow especially. You now have, because you're at a minimum, why are you at a minimum on that day shift? Well, because people can't get in because it's snowing. Okay, so now we now get a half a dispatcher. How does that benefit the town? How does that benefit the police officers? How does that benefit the firefighters? I don't know. Can't speak for firefighter. In terms of police, that doesn't benefit us at all. So I, that 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 just right there doesn't make any sense. Um, uh, let's see. Let me talk about that. I'm hopefully wrapping up for you here. I just wanted to make a few points. Um, oh, the study, I have to go back to the study, and I I hate beating that one out, but I'll talk about the town study first. Here's another thing. Here, we're trying to explore this opportunity for regional dispatch, which is is very rapidly showing that it's really not a benefit to us. However, that being said, the study last year, I don't know, about a year ago, of the townspeople showed, it was even, I believe, a headline on my cell phone saying that the town was satisfied with its its current police service. You know, stop me if I'm wrong. So if we're already satisfied with that as a community, why would we explore something else that ultimately is not gonna benefit us? Does anyone have a comment to that? Okay, so. Uh, and then there's the study, the study that came out that, you know, police officers and firefighters, firefighters might have known, I can't speak. Police officers, none of the police officers knew about this study that came out that was done, where they, you know, they spoke with the chief of the fire department, they spoke with the chief of police. And it was referenced by the fire chief last meeting that, you know, during the study, you know, we spoke to the stakeholders. And uh I I almost fell out of my chair when that was said. Stakeholder, as we know, are the people that are actually affected by this, um not only involved. So that would be the community, that would be the police officers, that would be the firefighters. Nobody in the community, they they didn't talk to anybody in the community, they didn't talk to any of the firefighters, they didn't talk to any of the police officers, talked to a chief and a chief. And what are both chiefs gonna want? I if I was a chief, you know what, I can't I can't say, um but I think regional, I might look at because, listen, they have the staffing issues, I understand that. And how nice would it be to no longer have a staffing issue or have to deal with dispatch? I had a past chief that did not want to deal with dispatch, and that's why he initially signed on to this. We all know that. We were told that to our faces. Didn't want to deal with it, not because it was a benefit to the town, a benefit to the people, or made us any more safe. It was never even mentioned. Don't want to deal with dispatch. Hmm, great. I do believe the fire chief, in in our current chief, them wanting to uh strengthen our dispatch and 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 make it a uh a easier place to work or or more beneficial for the townspeople, I believe they are coming from the heart, for sure. But fifty percent of this is initially started with someone that just didn't want dispatch. So let's remember that too. Like, you can't, you can't just forget that. Um, that's enough for me. Thank you very much.
I wanted to just clarify um what the young lady from Hopkinton Dispatch. Um, in the addendum, um uh for the report, she is correct that the minimum was two. Uh, but she failed also to mention that um it's expected that five dispatches will be on during the day, six at night, and four o- over the midnight. That was the plan. I also want to just clarify that this is the recommendation from the study. It does not, this does not determine the minimum staffing or the maximum staffing. That would be determined by the communities that go into this and and what their, what uh level of service they expect. So again, she was correct about it says for minimum, um again, but I think she failed to communicate what was the other part of the um staffing recommendation that we would um have to determine.
Thank you, Chief.
Does everyone know that there is an addendum to the report? Okay, you've got that.
Yeah, just want to add again, before moving forward with anything, we would need to know, then if he's saying that was just a suggestion, townspeople need to know, what is it gonna be? How many is it gonna be? That's a big, big question that needs to be answered. Can't move forward without it.
My name is Mike Gunning. Um, I do not work for Towns, I used to. I worked here for many years. I came over because I actually talked with Kyle on a regular basis, and he was telling me what's going on and stuff. I actually work for the town of Ashland, and I also work for the town of Okeechmaw. I am a nine one emergency dispatcher for the town of Ashland, and I'm a police officer for the town of Okeechmaw. I have experience of working out of a regional center. Um, for small, tiny towns, uh it's gonna be the Rutland Regional Communication Center, Emergency Communication Center uh for small, tiny towns. Yeah, that 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 kind of works when you have one officer on patrol, or maybe two officers on patrol in the town, and a volunteer fire department, like that. It does work for that. Um, but for a town like this, where their call volume is much higher and much busier, it's it's not, it it's not gonna work well. Um, a matter of fact, I have friends who have worked for some regional centers. And the problem with that is they are constantly running into people leaving because there's, they don't have enough staffing, and there's always forces that are happening. And these forces are happening that are causing people to not have any days off, or limited days off at best. And it's extremely frustrating with them. Um, to address what the chief was saying in regards to mutual aid for other towns, after their first alarm they have, if they have any type of fire call after the first alarm, that, the uh the additional alarms, they transfer to District fourteen. Are you guys familiar with that at all? Okay, so District fourteen, District fourteen is a town with uh many towns, I believe it's twenty-two towns, that operate on one district. That district is out of the Ashland Fire Department. Okay, we man that over there. We have separate police and separate fire dispatch centers, so there's two dispatches on at all times, without doubt. Once that call is over there, we handle getting the other towns to your scene. We go over radios, we go over phones if we have to, and we get those towns over there. Uh, in the case where you may have uh motor vehicle crash with with multiple vehicles or something like that, or multiple patients, and they need additional assistance to respond. Well, yeah, then you are calling over the radio, or you are calling over the phone. However, nine and a half out of ten times, every single one of us, we're monitoring all the towns around us. We have nine and a half, nine and a half out of ten times, we have that ambulance going before they they call over here because we're listening to that call. We know they have a call going on. We know what's going on over there. Because we've been trained up to do all the stuff, all right? Now, in the towns around you, yeah, most towns around you have two dispatchers at all times, right? Is that something you guys should probably consider? Yeah, probably be a bad idea. It's a benefit for for the for the town to have that. And all the towns around you who have it, Hopkinton, Ashland, Westboro, Framingham, they all have it, and it works well, even Marlborough. They all have it, and it works well having the having the two two people on at all times. Um, I don't know as far as um. Sorry, um. As far as going forward, um you know, with looking at this, I agree with what Sergeant, what it says. When you look at that map, those smaller towns out there, yeah, that's where these centers make sense. Because these towns are, I mean, I I I control a town that has a population of one thousand eight hundred fifty-one people, it's a town of Okeechmaw. Feel free to look it up on your computers. The town next to me, they have a population of just over a thousand people. So for these small towns, it's great to here, it's not gonna work. You have too many calls to, you you guys, look at where you guys, look at where you guys covered, not just all here in Southborough here. You also have main roadways, you have Route nine, you have four ninety-five, you have the mass pipe. And both police and fire respond up to those when they're, when they have a call up there. On top of that, they know these towns. We all know our towns, okay? For example, we have in 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 Ashland, okay, we have two two Derek me's, actually, the old one is closer, and then one. So when we get a call, someone's like, I might not deal with Derek, I know what that is. If you have a regional center, and someone's never spent, you know, has not spent time in the town, they don't know the town, they they live how, they live in Plainville, Massachusetts, and they just work on this regional center. They don't know where that is. These are things you need to consider when you're taking this, when you're taking you're taking the time to decide if this is going to be something you want to, you want to go for or not. I don't believe it, it's 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 a good fit for any of these towns, and my towns, I consider it, so I'm 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 happy with that. But I'm just saying.
Your tone's flat.
We're not even considering it. Um, so I mean, I I it's not something I'm I'm worried about. But I know from working over here, I mean, I've taken, I've taken some pretty crazy calls over here when I worked over here. And for example, is we had a call one night, I had a mother on the phone, six-month-old child in her arms, she's literally yelling into the phone because her child stopped breathing and turning blue because they were choking. I was on radio, I dispatched police and fire, and I was able to talk with her and give her the instructions she needed to be able to do, to be able to give a child back blows, to help that child. Because I've been trained up, and 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 I know I do a good job, as does everybody here. We've all taken these calls. And we we know what we're doing. When you get into these, when you get into these regional centers, you no longer as the town have control over what's going on with their training. This is the, this is the state that's handling all this now. It's just, it's just some things that I think, I think you guys should really think about before, you know, you make a decision on what I'm wanting to go forward with this thing. Um, the like the map show, out in Western Mass and some of the small towns in Central Mass, sure, I can see where this makes sense. Because I worked on a lot of those. For busier, more populated areas like this, I think you're gonna end up regretting. And I know some towns have already pulled out some of these, and I'm sure you have the information on that. They have left it because it has not worked for them. Anyway, I just came over because I was talking to Kyle, but this is just wanted to say my piece on that.
Thank you.
So we're gonna. All right, uh for the benefit of uh some of you, maybe, or uh reporting itself there. But my history, personal history is, I served on the Western Fire Department for forty-three years, twenty-seven as their chief, and I give eleven years here as a dispatcher in Southborough, and it's kind of my retirement job. I don't like endless studies. I think cities, uh small towns like Western, Southborough, spend too much time and too much money studying when the obvious answer is right in front of us. It's my personal opinion that the state is the prime mover behind all this. For some of the reasons. So I do witness, but they they're dangling a lot of money in front of all of us. They dangle it for, my understanding is, for three years. And then we have an unknown budget after that. We don't know what it's gonna cost us after that. But any life, if you want to call it that, comes from the cost. To the best of my knowledge, I don't know. None of you are the sort of dispatcher. Yeah, uh probably haven't had too much exposure to it to know what really goes on. My thoughts that uh this town should be looking at how they can improve the current situation. You have built a brand-new public safety facility with a state-of-the-art communication center. There's a couple of problems with that. Number one is, there aren't enough people in it. It should be, you've got everything costs money, you've got to fight the bullet if you want to make it the way it should be. You should have a minimum of one dispatcher dedicated to fire, and one that is dedicated to police twenty-four seven. They can be, if shit hits the fan, one can, you know, work with the other. They don't, you know, say it's a big fire, this doesn't necessarily have much. work with the other. They don't, you know, say it's a big fire, this doesn't necessarily have much police or traffic. Both of them can work together on that. I find it surprising that we talk about mutual aid, particularly fire mutual aid. That's all, that system is all there. It's a 10 alarm warning card. It's a matter of a phone call or, just, you know, and like Cunningham said, everybody, the dawn, if they got any, any kind of knowledge whatsoever, they, they know what's going on. They hear what's going on in other communities and they can, you know, a lot of them can act, they don't even need the phone call. They know what's, they know what's going on. You know, they hear it on the radio, the South Rose struck a first alarm. Westboro knows that they're gonna come here and keep the fire. That mutual aid system is the best thing going for all these towns and cities. Where else can you make a phone call or make a radio call and you get millions of dollars worth of equipment, manpower, at no cost whatsoever? That system has been established when I was in Western. We had a 32 cities and town dispatch, you know, 10 alarm card, everyone from Boston to out to Western. All pre-planned, all on paper, all they had to do was say, I've got a second alarm. It was all automatic. It exists here. Okay? We gotta do, you've got to spend the money. Need another dispatcher. Neither the police chief or the fire chief should be, can properly supervise the communications. There's always, you know, you can hear the fire don't get along with the police, the police don't get along with the fire. There's always gonna be personnel problems. Neither chief can probably supervise that. Should have, in addition to this other dispatcher, you should have a supervisor, make it another entity, whatever you want to call it, that is the communications department. Separate, separate entity. Was the other, the two gentlemen involved, and I have great respect for both of them. But that should be, they've got enough problems with their own personnel, with their own departments. They shouldn't have to be worrying about the communications center. What they should have is someone in the communications center that they can go to. They got a problem with a dispatcher or with what went down and what didn't go down, they can go to them, to that person and attempt to straighten it out. It can't be human nature. There's gonna be disagreements no matter way, way. Let's, I, I think really, if you go to regional dispatch, you've given up, you've given up your control over what you have most. You probably have next to nothing to say and who gets hired there, who the supervisor is there. You've got four communities in there. Keep it local. Keep it where you can keep your finger on it. You can dictate who's in there. I said I don't like study committees, but I'll tell you right now, if, two of us, two retired folks from Western in this town, retired police lieutenant John Lyons, who served on the building command, who him and I both way back, it's funny you say North Rose, way back, the town of Western studied to join a region. And North Rose was one of them. North Rose decided out, West Rose decided out. All that they ever told me was, every budget year, we don't have money for this, we don't have money for that. Can't spend this, we can't spend that. And then they wanted to go take on a, a big burden of a regional dispatch center. And I think at the same time, we were offered three years. I think I've covered everything that I could cover. I'll volunteer to help you if you might, to get into the local stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bonnie. Good evening, all of you. 21 years ago, I had suggested to the advisory board that they separate the police dispatch center out of the police budget and have it stand alone and also recommended that they have a director of the department. I'm not gonna repeat everything John said, but I think your, the decision before you is premature. I don't think they have all the information. Any one of us that had scanners in our houses and our homes and our businesses for the last 47 years understands District 14, understands the mutual aid agreement. But the confusion I have here this evening is when you're saying it's an intermunicipal agreement. Is there a timeline that that has to be renewed?
Renewed?
Renewing it. Every year, every other year.
And the agreement will specify that. There'll be a, 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 alright, or they will talk about that.
Alright, but we don't know.
But be specific, tell us what you think we haven't done.
I think you need to do more research on what we have and how to improve on it. That's, that's how I will approach this.
So your vote is to keep it local and, and,
My vote would be to keep it local.
And show it up here.
Yes, and without having those numbers and we have a brand new police public safety building, we've only been in it three years. We all were there for the ground opening. I think we built the state of an art building. I don't think you've done the legwork to find out what it would take to improve what we have. That's up to you and the department. That's, the second thing is, is this gonna be a regional agreement in the future? Similar to the high school?
Yes. We're talking about doing it as a district, so yeah, very similar to the high school.
Alright, so it'll be a regional agreement between the parties that are involved.
A separate entity just like the high school.
Just like the high school, which would have a budget every year based on population, based on runs, based on,
So that's what, that's what has to go into the governance of the structure. So that, that's, we're not, we're not there, no.
Alright, as a former member of the regional high school, I think you need to find out what there is before you even take the next step.
There's two choices, that's one of them.
Right.
There's, it could be a host, so that's one we think might be the perfect one of the two, but we're nowhere near deciding that either.
Right, and you're nowhere near to sign any kind of an agreement. It sounds like to me, actually. We have professionals in this room. I don't know each of them by name, but I have to say that certainly been at my front door, my back door, has assisted my family. They, it's a department that's overlooked and I've said it over and over again. They are your first responders without needing to be built or being on a first response, being on a piece of equipment. And I think you need to look at it. What are you giving up? I know what I think I would be giving up, but that's my opinion, which I'm not gonna share. But I think you really need to ask yourself as a committee, what are you giving up to the individuals of this town? By not taking a deeper look at what we have before you change it. That's all I have to say. But I, thank you for letting me know you're entering a municipal agreement. But it's gonna be more like a regional agreement.
We have two choices, we haven't decided, but I think the preference would be the regional versus,
Right, but you don't know what the regional time period is our,
Well, the IMA is, is from what I understand, just to apply for the grants, not for the setup of the,
Oh, once you apply for the grant, are you committed? Have you received the money? My understanding is you are.
If you apply for the grant and you receive the money, then you are.
You are committed.
The inter, the intermunicipal agreement is that.
That's what it is.
That, that, most of them do have a special.
Hi, so my name is Stephanie. I've been dispatching in South Rose for three years. I wasn't gonna speak, Fontaine. I wasn't going to speak, but with the last few speakers, I felt the need to. So I take a lot of pride in knowing South Rose, knowing the residents, knowing the issues, knowing locations. I, I take a lot of pride in knowing certain things that could escalate at certain addresses. I know that if Elton John's phone number pops up on my 911 screen, that there's a good possibility that his wife just overdosed, but he's gonna lie to me and he's gonna say, no, she didn't take anything. But I'm also gonna know that he's very confrontational with cops. So something like that, I take a lot of pride in knowing that, hey, you know, you guys need to go to this address and, oh, it's so and so's house. But just remember, he's confrontational with cops and he doesn't like to admit that his, his wife has issues, okay? Same thing with people with mental health issues. You know, we have, we have quite a few frequent flyers in town. It's really good that we know these people. We know their behaviors. We know their family members. We know how their family members behave. It's good to know these things because we're able to let our fire department know, we're able to let the police department know, okay? You know, Sergeant Whitson spoke about how we used to have a chief who could have given a crap less about dispatch and it's the honest to God truth. I came in when he was there, he didn't care. As long as there was a person in that chair, he didn't care what happened. And it wasn't right. I think that our dispatch team now does a fantastic job. I think we do very well working together, working with both departments, working with the DPW, working with local agencies, everything. I think that if you guys don't think that we're doing enough of our job, look more into our communications office, put more money into our communications office. The fire department thinks that we need to have two people on at all times. Okay, well, let's do some research in the office and see if that's what we need. Do we need a second full-time dispatcher at all times? Maybe we do, maybe we don't. I think that we're not doing enough studies in our town specifically to see what we could improve, if needed to improve. Versus just saying, hey, let's, let's go regionalize. I don't think that that's the answer. I think it's a good idea to keep it local. You know, we know the town, we know the police department, we know the fire department. We know a lot of the residents. You know, it's just, I think it's best to keep it local. I think that you guys need to do a little bit more research to come into our communication center. You know, Kyle has invited you guys to come in, see how we operate, see what goes on day to day. I think that would be a good idea if you guys did. I, I vote keep it local. I think that would be in a better favor for the townspeople and for both the fire department and the police department. Thank you.
Before we go to the next one, is there anyone here that actually supports regulation? Is, is everybody on the side of?
Alright, hi, my name's Brittany Ramard. I am a current communications employee. I started with the town in January 2019. I left for about a year and a half and then I came back. And that just shows you how much of a dedicated, important department this is that I would leave from where I came from to come back. Okay, so one question I have is if it's hard to staff the department now, it's gonna be hard to staff a regional center where people don't want to be regional. Every single dispatcher that I talk to in the area, they don't want to be regional. People that I talk to, I have a very good friend in Franklin, they have a regional center. He said their dispatches, I hate to say horrible, but it's not great. So how are we gonna get more people into the center if we can't even get people in the center where it looks appealing? There's nothing, it just seems like there's no pros for the employees in the center and it's all focused on money. Where no one, it's not the money, but it's the money because that's what we talked about the whole night. Also, if we put an officer on the front desk and then we move dispatchers over to the regional center, now you're taking one more person. Why don't you just take that one person and make it a dispatcher? So you don't want to leave the, the lobby dark. There have been serious walking calls that I've witnessed that neighborhood towns have witnessed that require serious action as in domestics, woman running into the lobby all beaten up after they were tied up and kept in their house and weren't allowed to leave. What's gonna happen when the station's dark? They're gonna, you think they're gonna stand there and hold a phone and talk to someone on dispatch? No, they're gonna try to find somewhere to hide. The first thing that I do is I get them into a locked room where in case a person's chasing them, they won't, they won't have access. And then if there is an altercation in the lobby, who's there? No one's there. Right now, it's great that we have people there that we have a good mode of communication other than just radios. If we have cell phones, we have the interior phones. I just think that we are given enough credit for the communication that we have personally among other officers. Another suggestion that I have is with the whole mutual aid issue, there are other surrounding agencies who are a part of these multi-town frequencies, as in one is called Bayburn. We could, as the Metro West community, we could make our own frequency and then that dissolves the whole phone issue. Then you just go over the frequency, just as you would with District 14, when you asked District 14 to, so for us, we assign our own first alarm, we call mutual aid. And then once we put the fire to a second alarm, then it transferred over to District 14. We could take the same concept for accidents, for medicals, for serious issues. And then that eliminates the whole time issue to call new departments. Another issue that I have with this whole concept is that the whole time I've been here, so January 2019 to June 2020, November 2021 till now, I have had one class with the fire department to let us know what they expect. Other than that, every single time we mess up, someone comes into dispatch and they tell us what we did wrong. But it's not related to everyone. There have been multiple instances where I've told that I had messed up, which that's okay, everyone messed up, but the other people in dispatch didn't know that that's what we're supposed to be doing. So you can't put us on blast for not doing something right when you haven't made that expectation out everywhere. If you have high standards, supply the training, work with us. Don't just look at us as like, oh, they literally firefighters tell us that they don't wanna have to worry about going home because if there's a mayday, they're gonna die. That's pretty brutal to say to your dispatchers who care about you. Like, it's not like we're anti-fire. So why don't we have the fire department put equal energy into dispatches the police are? Why is it only fallen on the police that police is taking care of the applications, police is taking care of staffing, police is taking care of the whole budget and then fire's just over here disappointed, but they're not providing any remedies? So just like other people said, we need to look into what we can fix now before we just try to throw it out to a whole new department because that's ideally what it is. No, the town just doesn't want to deal with that anymore. So then if we have a regional center, then there's, it takes the issues off of the current parties and then it just puts the issues onto someone else. My last point. That was my last point. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name's Blair Sutherland. Excuse me, I live at one three nine Parkerville Road. To qualify myself for a moment if I can, I'm the retired telecommunications director with the state police. I have twenty years' experience with that department and prior to that, I was with the state nine one one department for seven years and on the nine one one commission for twenty five years. Having said all that to you, I'm gonna turn to Joe and just say, I'm sorry I never met you before. Sorry, Joe, just, I'm sorry. See what retirement does to you, alright? So, um, so I have a couple of things I wanted to, to, to point out, but I think I'm gonna start just by saying, and a couple of people have said it already, to acknowledge the unbelievably fantastic work that dispatchers and telecommunications do here in the, in Southboro and throughout the Commonwealth. They are the unsung heroes. They are the first, first responders. And without them, the rest of the machine that has to be in the field, running into the house, doing the things that the law enforcement does, is impossible. So I, I throw, as I'm sure the board does as well, I throw my complete support around that profession and the great work that they do. That, that said, I've looked at the study pretty thoroughly. I, I think there are some good recommendations that came out of the Collins Center study. And I, I guess I'll start just with my two cents and I'll provide a little bit of context. I, I think, given the opportunity that the board may have here, I think it's worth that Southboro continue looking at the options. But in saying that, I, I wanna be clear. In, in my entire career's experience, I've seen really successful communication centers that have merged together, regional centers, and I've seen centers that wholly macro, they've had a lot of trouble. It all comes down to the plan and it all comes down to the willingness of those who are involved, including working with collective bargaining units and working with, with the entire, with the entire cadre of people to make a successful communications center. One size does not fit all and I'm in no position to say whether the town of Southboro should definitely do this or not. I do want to say though that I think it's smart that the town continue to look at what the options may be. I, I have a ton of experience with, with the nine one one grants and timelines. I certainly have some appreciation as to why the first step that municipalities have to take is to declare some sort of willingness to work together. I can tell you that I've seen some regional plans fall apart after the, the towns and the managers in the towns have not done their due diligence. So I applaud you continuing to look at it. I, I think due diligence is incredibly important here. I would also encourage the continuing discussion with the police chief and the fire chief. Having your public safety leaders continue to be or working with them to ensure that everybody's on the same page is really important as well. I do wanna take just a moment and discuss, you know, a, a subject that I hear I have heard in my career often talked about, and that is the, the kind of the specter of the dark station. There have been some communities that have chosen to, if you will, go dark after a certain amount of time. And some communities who have chosen to not go dark and still have someone on a desk or in the station to be able to handle either walk-in traffic or, or do whatever other either emergency or administrative business may be available to them. I've also seen hybrid plans where if a station, I'm gonna say, has to be abandoned in a small town, there may be a circumstance arise where your personnel in the station have gotta get in the cruiser or get in the apparatus and they gotta go. There, there's technology that's available that can be put at a front door, that can be a stopgap nature. That doesn't necessarily have to be even the full-time plan. So there, I think there are options available. I wanted to address the, the notion of dark station because that's pretty scary. And in a local town that's used to very personalized, I'm gonna say, you know, and fantastic customer service, then with that kind of change, it can be, that, that can be, that can be a difficult pill sometimes to try to, to try to choke down. In terms of, in terms of my experience, in terms of how you staff a nine one one center and how you manage to get good dispatchers and keep good staff, well, that's true of, of a public safety agency as much as it is of any other corporation. Trying to, and, and again, it all goes back to the plan. If the plan includes a hiring process, if the plan has competitive salaries, if a plan in working with the local chiefs has the right staffing in order to, to take into account not just the day-to-day call volume, because frankly, considering day-to-day call volume is easy. There was some discussion about what do we do in an exigent circumstance? We have a flood, we have a storm. Well, a, an operational plan in a professionally managed regional communication center absolutely can account for that. I'm not saying it's easy, it's, it's real professional management that is needed to think about when, when you need to try to bring in extra personnel or what's Plan B when there has to be a Plan B. I will say that situational awareness in a regional communication center is one of the, and frankly, it, it when you talk about situational awareness, I'm talking about situational awareness from a regional perspective. When a single center is taking information in from a number of communities, that information is resident at one spot and in that communication center and can be, in my opinion, and this comes from experience, much more easily distributed than trying to do callouts when unnecessarily on the radio or, or to relay calls back and forth. What, that's one of the things that, that regional centers and regional, regional management brings to the table. But again, it all comes down to, is the municipality and its public safety management serious about looking at regionalization? And are the, the partners, the other municipalities that are interested in doing it, are they on enough of a serious page to say, we're ready to take a step forward? So I, I, I guess, you know, it comes back to, right, you know, it's all about the plan. And it's all about the, the vetting not only discussions within, within the board and within the public safety professionals. It's taking into account all kinds of things that have to be considered when you're doing a plan like this. Like policy and procedure, like collective bargaining, if that's gonna, if that's gonna be an issue. Like whether you're gonna consolidate computerated dispatch systems, whether you're going to wanna move everybody onto the same radio system. And by the way, these things all don't have to happen at once. This can happen in an incremental, in an incremental way. Perhaps the last thing I'll say is just, I'm looking over Joe relative to, you know, to the nine one one program. In my entire time with the state, I've never known the nine one one program to ever cut funding from any, never mind regional center, from even from municipalities. Now, that said, there have been and likely will continue to be some reduction in some grant funding to, I'm gonna say, to the standalone PSEPs. The state has had a program for years to try to encourage municipalities to regionalize. Regionalization isn't for everybody, but I, I will leave you just sort of with this. Here in Massachusetts, I understand that this is, I'm about to be blasting this here. Here in Massachusetts, we have a history of doing things on a local control basis. And that works out for us here in the state fantastically. There has been though, opportunities for school districts to look at regionalized, for other kinds of regionalization that have been successful. In other parts of the country where local control doesn't operate that way, there are large, I'm gonna say, some of them are enormous regional communication centers that run like clockwork. That's a generalized statement. Not every center, you know, runs, you know, runs like a, like a perfect well-oiled machine, but there is, there are models that can be followed both here in state and elsewhere that can help perhaps inform not just Southboro, but Southboro's partners, since you guys can't do it by yourselves, to help inform the process as to what may make sense and how to continue to look at it. So my two cents is, I would encourage the town to continue to look at it, whether it's time to do paperwork or not, or whether more time is needed in order to, to figure it out. I guess that's, you know, that's up to the board to, to decide, but thank you.
Can I just make sure I got your name right?
It's Blair, Blair Sutherland.
Everyone knows him on Halloween.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Andrew Fatt, fifty O till, Chair of Advisory, speaking as an individual. I think one question I need before I provide any comments. So if we move forward with an IMA or whatever the letter of intent from the town administrator process is, if we apply for a grant, that grant isn't funded and is hired. If we ask for ten million dollars, the state says you get fifty bucks. Or then on the hook for nine million dollars, is that the case? Or not?
In terms, so if you, you, well, I use that as a, you put it for a ten million, you only get fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Then that's all it's funded for. It depends on if you wanna move forward with paying the ten million yourself or if you can parse that for the next grant.
But do we have to move forward with regionalization at that point?
If you have assigned IMA, more than likely yes.
But if we do the
letter of intent, then it's not assigned IMA's. The letter of attestation says that you're willing to work.
Why would the IMA have a count if you get fifty dollars out of ten million?
I can't speak to that. The IMA is something that you, you're a district attorney, you're
That's probably not a realistic example, but I, I mean, I get
You know, like
But you would think that there would be a way if you didn't get, if, you know. I don't think you wanna leave here tonight with everybody thinking that money was the emphasis, because it was not. Chief Attila's is, and Chief Moore are sincerely worried about the system we have in place right now. They don't think it is strong enough and would therefore like to shore up one way or the other. Money was never the impetus for this at all. Yes, money's always part of everything, but it's not impetus for this. But if we
That's a risk.
Yeah, okay, so
That was, that was my, my concern.
We're thinking that IMA, you have something in there.
We, right, right.
Really good, if you get, you know, ten percent of the basketball, you got
Correct. Because I think if, if it's binding, we're not there yet, I don't think, in my opinion, to bind ourselves to this. But if it's, if it's non-binding in terms of if we don't get what we asked for, I think it's worse going forward. But let me, but now that there's a possibility we could exist, I think that we could, so this is what I wanna say. I wanted to first say that I, I know me as an expert on this topic, but I've been following this closely and have formulated some thoughts on the topic. Fortunately, I was able to tour the rec facility in Foxborough and I was very impressed with what I saw. As a technology professional, I thought the infrastructure redundancy, facility dedication of the staff there was awesome. The ability to immediately pop up the information from your phones, medical ID information, data if there's a car crash from the vehicle, to know what seats people are in, whether the airbags were deployed, it rolled over, whether or not the temperature alarm went off in the car, there's a fire. It was, it was very impressive. Immediately after coming back from Foxborough, I toured the town's dispatch center. And while it is staffed by amazingly dedicated dispatcher, the technology stack and the infrastructure just pales in the first. We don't have the same functionality, don't have redundancy, we don't have the same technology, we just can't. This town simply cannot afford or should try to keep up with a facility like that. It makes wise financial practice to look at this further. While we could staff a local dispatch with two or three people, we still would have a gap in our ability to have dedicated oversight of, of the team with someone that is an expert at running dispatch. Both the chiefs do a great job at, you know, but the knowledge and specific dedication that I saw from the management staff in Foxborough and their commitment to accreditation, national best practices, training programs, their training room was nicer than our entire dispatch center. It was intensive, the fact is what they did for the employees. Here's some of the dispatchers talking about the lack of training. It's, it's, it was kind of night and day. I do suggest, after knowing, that we, maybe we could get it out depending on how we, we look for it. That we move forward with the application depending on if it's IMA or a letter of intent. And wait to hear back from the state on what funding is available and then determine if the funding is adequate to move forward. But regardless, I am in favor of always having a station officer or civilian desk person on staff so that our station is not there has other towns that have done this in the past and there's still an overall cost savings and an improvement. Thank you.
I'd like to just clarify, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. You, if, if you don't spend, if you're awarded grant and you don't spend it.
Correct.
You can either extend the grant for another year, or hey, we, we have to get extended.
Okay.
Or you can give the money.
Okay, that's what I'm, I'm
But the minute you spend that money, you're on them. Either it's, hey, we can't move forward, so we spend five hundred dollars, get five hundred dollars back, we're not, we're not Preferably iTunes.
Thank you very much. I'm not from town, as I already mentioned, and I promise I'll be brief.
You guys, introduce yourself.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Kylie Davis. I am the president of Hockington Dispatch Union. I just wanted to speak in terms of, you know, they talked about this technology and being able to narrow it in, and I'm gonna speak as an outsider with the potential of coming into this rec center and potentially dispatching for your town. And I've been with Hockington for five years. And there are still parts of town that I have no idea where they exist now. I do details on the road, I've had ride-alongs. I've been with the town for five years and there's still parts of town that if a older gentleman were to call in and say, I'm at Echo Lake on the side where, you know, this rock is, I'm not gonna know where that is. So the big part of, yes, there is an extensive amount of technology that comes with nine one one if your residents are calling in on a nine one one line. What is failed to be mentioned in this study is how many phone calls the residents place to just the department. Now, here's a big, big thing and it's something to take very seriously. I'm a new dispatcher in this rec center and I'm assigned Southboro and Grafton. Grafton Fire, you know, Southboro Police. And your resident calls in not on a nine one one line. And they're saying, I'm, you know, at this place and instead of giving me a street name because they grew up in town, this is what it was always called. And it's an emergency and they can only recall the landmark. It's not specific enough for somebody who's from out of town. And while it is, it's a great idea to say that you'll give virtual ride-alongs to out-of-town dispatchers who are coming into this new rec center so that we can have a better understanding of your town. It's taken me five years to just know Hockington and I don't know it in its full capacity. And each community is growing. But like I said, there is no, if somebody's calling in on a landline, I can't see where they are on a map. I can't tell you what street they're close to. I can't tell you if their airbags deployed or how fast they're traveling. That is all stuff you're given when somebody, somebody's car calls nine one one on their path or somebody calls in with their cell phone. So while the study states, you know, they give all these numbers on how many calls each one of our departments receives every year, what I found was lacking was how many calls just the business line for that station gets. Because it's double the amount, if not triple the amount of nine one ones. So without having somebody with a lack of knowledge or with knowledge of your town picking up your phone lines, it's going to change how something is dispatched, mutual aid or just basic response. So
Can I ask your question?
Yes, ma'am.
So are you suggesting then, because anybody that may be hired through just
So are you suggesting then, because anybody that may hire through dispatch does, may not necessarily live in Southborough. So would you not face the same challenges that you're talking about about not understanding Southborough and not knowing Southborough if somebody from, say, Worcester came and was dispatching here? It's going to take time to understand all those things. I think, is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement, and I would not dispute that. However, so I don't live in Huffington.
Yep.
I grew up in Milford.
Yep.
And I had to learn the town of Huffington.
Yep.
From the start. However, I was learning one town. From my base knowledge of some of these centers, your dispatcher is not designated to a town like they are right now. So I might work. So right now I work exclusively for Huffington, and I'm lucky that I have another dispatcher with me. And we do have a director who runs our communications department. And I'm not here to speak about how that functions. And but it functions well. But if I'm a dispatcher coming into a rec center, from my understanding is I would not be assigned to Huffington. I would be expected to rotate amongst the departments that are in play. And police and fire for every department does not function the same as Huffington. I can tell you right now, if I came over to Southborough tomorrow to dispatch, well, I have knowledge and training. It's not going to be the way they would expect it to happen. And that's a big concern with these centers is police and fire, they run a certain way. They like to function a certain way. They have expectations. Now you have people who don't understand the expectations for all these different towns. You don't have the knowledge. I hate to say it's not always the best because you now you're new every day, and it takes triple the amount of time to learn.
So so when you say calls coming in through the business line or non nine one one phone, you're talking about a landline calling nine one one or a cell phone calling the five oh eight whatever number to get through to the business?
Correct.
That's what you're referring to?
Correct. You can, yes, yeah. So like the business line, then the line that's assigned to the police or fire station directly versus the nine one piece app. Because that comes with all that mapping and equipment and extra knowledge, which is pulled from technology.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got someone coming over. Steve, you want to come back on?
I'm just kidding. You can't leave yet.
Hi, Ms. Willis. Can you hear us?
Hello?
Hi, I want to hear you.
Hi, thank you. I just really quickly wanted to point out.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, hi, I'm sorry. This is Sherry Wittis, thirty two Bigelow Road. The the report, the the, I'm sorry, I'll reference its actual title. The report that everyone keeps referencing, I should have got that beforehand. I'm sorry, I can't find it. About regional dispatch, the that's for set all the towns, seven towns, not just the four towns that we're discussing now. So don't you think that we should probably revise that report to just reflect all the numbers based on the four towns and how that's going to affect us? Because if the minimum staffing for seven towns was.
It has been. That's why if you listen to me, we talked about the addendum. So there is an addendum to the report that does reflect the reduction from seven to four.
Okay, does that talk about the the minimum staffing for dispatchers?
Yes.
It did. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't read the full report. However, I did note that there is a draft agreement in there which does referencing how the how the agreement would be renewed. It would be renewed every five years and then for a limit of twenty five years unless renewed by all the other towns. That was in the report to answer someone's previous question. So I just think maybe we shall read the report again before we make any big decisions. Thank you.
Ms. Willis, that actually was a template agreement, so we could actually make that anything we need, we can agree to. That was a suggestion as a starting point for it. Again, depending on the town's agreement, that can be any number that you choose.
Yes, and I I referenced that. I guess I just thought when that question was asked, nobody even called out that answer. I just, thank you. Good night.
So Dave Midda, Southborough Police, I worked as a dispatcher there, twenty plus years. Invested, born and raised here. I remember when the police department was behind us downstairs on the first floor. I actually broke that window playing basketball. Wanted to tell you that. Yeah, I did. Yeah. So we've heard a lot, regional, not regional, you know. The plan is here, we're working here, we function four of us. We had five, but she moved on to greener pastures. A lot of people that we hire don't want to do this job by themselves. They want to do two. I can tell you I can multitask, I can tell you I lock up, then I multitask. But you have to find an individual that can multitask, do the fire, do the police, do the person that comes in for an LTC application, help the person that needs CPR over the phone. There was a question about your mutual aid. We have a program in our radio system that I can monitor and I can even talk to multiple towns at the same time. Unfortunately, that's not the practice we do. When we put out a call, it's to us singularly. Then we use the telephone to call the departments, which not going to be a dead horse, but that might need to be looked at. To answer your question thoroughly, sir, I'm a big fan of doing that. Twenty four seven, we're twenty four seven. That's one person, all working for the town of Southborough, fielding all sorts of calls. We work for the DPW, the police department, the fire department, the animal control officer. We've now been taking calls from the Mass Pike along with four ninety five. So I think for one person, eight hours a day, and try to bang out sixteen hours. You know, I listen to loud music, it's to flush my brain when I leave the building. You know, it it's a good job. I love it. I have been doing it for twenty two, twenty two years. I might be shy on that that twenty two, that last year, but it's a long time. And I can talk in turrets. I can talk three, four times. If you need it, I'll repeat as many times as you want. You got to find that individual, that's tough. But you got to have two people running at the same time. Our equipment is great, our computers are great. We all know computers last for as long as you don't break them, but they've never been updated. We haven't had one update on the radio system. What you can bang, I can probably find two addresses for seventeen Conne Street in our computer system because it's never been updated from our old computer system. When we were still at nineteen Main Street, they merged it all together and we got doubles. That's never been fixed. They've been sitting there. I can pick up people that are are moved out of town, not because they haven't told us, it's because they're in the computer three or four times because of that switch over. There's an update that could correct all that stuff. Our radio system, not the state of the art, but it's good. We don't use it to its full capacity. Our training, it's the best that the state can offer. We all do EMD. It's a rhythm. I can't dance a step, but I'll tell you what I can do. I can talk on the telephone, I can talk on nine one one and EMD on the same time. All four of us can. I'll say all four of us again, that's three shifts, four people, twenty four seven, seven days a week. That's that's a lot. This this profession has a burnout rate that's astronomical. It changes every week on from people quitting, meltdowns, not wanting to do it anymore. You know, money, money's as much as you make. I'll never cry that I make too much money, I'll never cry that I don't make enough. You know, I like what I'm doing. You know, any questions for me? I mean, anything?
Speak to regionalization, you taught us about local. So what do you think about the proposal to possibly regionalize the dispatch?
Yeah, it's a double edged sword. I really don't care about anybody other than within the town of Southborough. If I need to help a surrounding town, I will give them one hundred percent, one hundred percent of the time. But I only worry about Southborough. Regionalization, I hear two awful stories. You never get to the town that you're from. Don't care because when I'm there, I'm going to have to work for all of them. If it's four towns, have to work for all four towns. Now, I know well how taxing I can tell you that working for one town is. I am an old dog, but I I do have some new tricks. I don't want to learn about three other towns because of that simple thing. You know where Fitzgerald's Market is? You know where Fitz's is? You know where the T Station is? I don't know where they are in other towns. Every town has a Fitz's, every town has an MBTA Station. So I I don't, I don't want to go regional. But hey, if that's the choice, then you have to deal with it. You know, it's still the job in a different location. I won't be happy. And honestly, I only got like two more years left, three more years left. Mister, a couple answer guy, I'll be gone. All right, I'll tell you exactly what you want to hear and elaborate when I can. You might not like my answer, but I'll I'll tell you straight up, and no, I don't want to go regional. Like I said, I do care about other communities, but I focus Southborough and then secondary goes to the other town. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
And and I I just want to make sure that we fully recognize. And I think a year ago, when we were asked to do the dispatcher and add it into the next fiscal year, like, we want to support you.
Oh, I agree.
And the fact that you guys, the four of you, are running a twenty four seven operation, it 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 blows my mind. And, you know, I think this town owes you a lot of things for that. And I know, I know it's hard, and I know that, you know, we we just, we can't seem to get ahead. And, you know, as soon as we get the fifth one, it's it's not, it's not staying. So, you know, I think, I think we all recognize that you need help. And, you know, I I appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions?
So just give your perspective on. I mean, everyone that has come has had concerns about going regional also seems to support the idea that if we don't do that, we should staff up so that we have two dispatchers. And then you also mentioned Huffington as a full time communications person. So that police, fire don't have to, they can focus on police and fire. So. And this isn't just about money, it's just thinking through, okay, so let's say we made a decision, that's what we're going to do. And then we're also going to take on all of the paying for all the capital to maintain fully, you know, state of the art. Even if we thought about it, you know, the crunched all the numbers, town meeting appropriated the money, and then we posted all these jobs, would we be able to really fill, right? Because for, it's a, yeah, if there's. So that that.
That's why I threw that out there.
So I I, you know, I mean, what I'm hearing is there's also some of these same, you know, staffing problems in the in in the regional centers, but it seems like at least there you've got, you know, not just the problem of one dispatcher.
The odds are against you, honestly. You have one town, one dispatcher, eight hours a day. You have a regional of three or four towns. If you have a minimum of both two, as Sergeant would have said, you'd now add a half. Now existing, you've got that one guy, which is your your average is better here in Southborough, honestly. You know, because the, what is it, six, you said this man's away, is the maximum? I'm not going to name names, not to say where. They don't have the bodies, they they don't, they they run three. If you run three, you have one and a half, you have one and a half. I know that I've been, this is my third day on, there's been four applications so far for the fifth dispatcher. So it's out there. We we use, Kyle should be able to explain what ones we use, but we put the applications out. And on Swizz, I'm not even going to tell you that I know the name of the company. Because with a Z, Solo, Zulu, Zippo, I don't know, but it's on that Zill, right? Or or one of those hiring websites. So we're out there. I don't know. But there, it's out there for people to come here.
Yeah.
It's just that nobody wants to work by themselves. I mean, you've got a big room, right?
That's something, that's one of the points, the odds are against us.
Yeah, but you still get that one guy versus one or a half on a regional center. When that storm comes in, we prepare to have two people on on, we know when when climate weather is going to come. With that storm that came through, when the house burnt on that street, well, we stayed, we had two people covering through that and ran smoother. When you see it coming, we prepare for it. Unfortunately, you can't prepare for all of them. And two with us works great. We weren't good with one. Great, or you want good? Let's see, consider. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
So. Do you want to come on?
Yes, I do. Kyle, just wanted to touch first. I guess I'll be last.
I just wanted to touch on your staffing levels. I know you guys run with four. I'm Kylie Davis. I just wanted to touch on your staffing levels as a department that runs similar numbers to Southborough. And so we, like I said, run two per shift. We have a communications director. We have eight full time dispatchers, that's double the amount, obviously, because we run two. And we have six part timers. So and we don't have a hard time maintaining staffing because people aren't being forced in on doubles every day. They're not necessarily tired of the job because it is a stressful job. So if you can get up to an appropriate staffing on just a, on just a in-house level, it does make a world of difference as far as keeping people once you do find those good candidates. And that, I mean, we have double the amount of staffing, but we don't have the issue of maintaining people. That's not to say that people don't leave, but we're not in a, we don't put our ourselves in a terrible condition when that does happen.
Thank you. One, Count Vincent, president here in Southborough, also a resident. Most of my stuff has already been touched on, such as the whole Western Ash thing that's been covered. Just talking about recruitment process and what happens. I want to say, not half the police department, but pretty close to half the police department has been a dispatcher in Southborough. Gets, I wouldn't necessarily call it a promotion, but they become a patrol officer after becoming a dispatcher. When you look at the figures and you say, oh, another posting for a dispatcher, well, might it happen? So and so began a police officer or so and so went here, whatever the case may be. I think that needs to be taken into consideration when you're, you know, talking about why we can't fill them. Another reason, low pad. I think that's been kind of rectified for our last contract. I think we're kind of in the middle now. I'll leave it at that. Also, people leaving again, it's been touched on by other people that have come up here, but previous leadership, you know, didn't want to work there. I take pride in working in Southborough, fifth generation. My family's been in town since nineteen twelve, so there is some passion behind it. When we're talking about, you know, technology and everything, we have the same technology they're talking about with the cars and everything like that. It's called Rapid SOS. We got it, it's a free program, you sign up, no issues. We're also wireless direct, meaning cell phone calls come directly to us. We're also wireless direct, meaning cell phone calls come directly to us. Same with the Mass Bike, same with four nine five. We get the calls. If there's a medical aid or an accident, we can dispatch immediately. If not, DMV, boom, send it off to State Place, no issues there. When we're talking about regional sites of a failure, Essex Regional, I I don't need to win it. Everyone has cell phones to Google Essex Regional. You'll find millions of articles. I just did it myself. They tried to get Ipswitch to just join. They said no. It was gonna be free, correct? You can't charge them?
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be free. They said no, they're gonna staff their dispatch. Uh, when we look at a more local department, looking Hopedale. Hopedale was making many promises to go regional. They decided to go regional. Uh, didn't work out, whatever promises were broken, didn't work out. They said, we're hiring their dispatchers back. That's what they did. Hopedale now has dispatchers, what the state has done, has, they've not given them their computers back. So I guess technically, they are regional. They have a ring down system, it's called. So Upton answers their phone and they just get transferred to Hopedale. And Hopedale has their dispatchers because they were not satisfied with that level of service. When we're talking about minimum staffing, I can tell you what uses it regional is another regional center. Four towns, there are always a minimum staffing. Two guys, four towns. Um, I I I don't think I need to come up here and hound all this, it's been covered, but just letting you guys know that. When it comes to, you know, mutual aid and anything like that, yes, we are part of District fourteen. We all have scanners, we all listen. Mike Cunningham touched on it before. If we hear something, we're dispatching immediately. You know, any good dispatchers got the scanner on. At one point, we had automatic aid with Westborough. I I think it was a technology thing, it might have been before Chief Killies was here, but when we struck the first line, Westborough was already en route, there was some sort of a work that Southborough went to Westborough. Again, like I said, it might have been before Chief Killies, but now it stopped. There are technology in place to, you know, facilitate all this, you know, and and we need to really look at that. And again, I'll I'll say it again. You guys, as a board selectman, you need to come and tour the dispatch center, not just a tour, coming in, popping your head in, saying, oh, what's this screen, what's this? No, it's sitting there. And I will give credit to Lisa when this first started, she's the only one who did come in. And she sat with me for a few hours to see what actually goes on. Other members of the board, you really need to do that. Like I said, I'm not that hard to get a hold of. People have my number, email, I'm in town, you know? It's easy. When we're talking about supervisors and things like that in the comm center. I don't know if you guys know it, but recently through the previous contract we created with the dispatcher position, I was given that. So now this is relatively new. You know, it's something that everyone wanted and, you know, we're we're getting it off and it it, I think it's working out great. Any questions?
Everything that we do.
Again, it's not something that I want, I want a single regional. I I think we need to really look at our department, look at our community and provide that service to the residents. You know, even when Brittany's talking, you know, her firsthand experience, you know, I've I've had him too. And, you know, I I've mentioned him here last time. But it happens. Thank you.
Like the touch on your subjects. I'd like to ask this gentleman. Do you have a need for two dispatches in South? You have a need for two dispatches in Hopkinton. Need for two dispatches in Ashland, and you're only proposing to have in both the other community, Westboro?
It's Westboro, Grafton.
All those, you know. I'm sorry, people can try to argue with any of our conditions. You've got to have, you know, depending on something, you've gotta have two people. Even in this nice little town, you've got to have two people. But if you're gonna have two here and two there and two there, and you're only proposing to have a maximum of five. Work.
I just wanna clarify.
Yeah, the State nine-one department is not proposed. That's an independent study. The State nine-one department is not proposed. This is a proposed center. I couldn't speak to staffing levels. That's done by the independent study of the Collins.
Well, in your addendum, addendum report or whatever, what does it say for the staffing levels?
So this is, this is what the suggestion came back in the study. It's not anything that agreed to. And I think, and I don't wanna speak for the chief, but the the reason why we're concerned about having one in Southborough is that if something happens, there is no back, right? So that doesn't necessarily translate though to, at any given time for four towns, you need two per town. So it's to mitigate your risk when more than one thing's going on at a time. It doesn't, it doesn't correlate to needing two per town.
Let me tell you something about your existing situation with one dispatcher. I'm making no bones about it, the previous police chief did not like dispatches. He didn't have you know, he really didn't care about.
We've we've heard that tonight, so that's
Okay. So now you've got this state of the art. And I I take it, I'd like to know from the finance general there, what he thinks we lack in technology. But you've got in the old building, and you worked there with one dispatcher, you had the break room up, where the offices, usually there was someone in there, okay? I know from my own experience, when I'd get a nine-one-one call, I'd be getting the information. And then he, a police sergeant, it would be over my shoulder, and he would transmit what was needed to his guys and then leave, you know, he he bailed you out if, you know, we get two, three, four miles at once. Now with the new situation, I've visited there twice. There's one person in there. There's no access, I don't know, denied, whatever, but there's no no fire personnel there, or no police personnel that are in that immediate area at at any given time, you know? What day? The drop dead? Or the night guy?
We hope that doesn't happen.
And until the calls started coming in, and no one answered, you know, nine-one-one call, they, you know, after you don't answer, they have to, I don't know how many. They transfer it to Hopkinton, okay? But whoever, one single dispatcher in there, he died, you know? And you never know it until next morning.
The reason we're here tonight is because both the chiefs, the centers, they think the status quo is unacceptable. So then the question is, the status quo is unacceptable. They don't believe that what we've got with one dispatcher is not appropriate. And so the question is, do we shore it up locally, or do we do this regionalization process that we're trying to decide? And I don't think anyone here is is advocating for the one dispatcher per shift. At all. So we're looking at, what's the best way to fix this problem, locally or regionalization? So we're trying to make the person consider.
Okay, well, I strongly urge you to stay local.
Okay. So, all night. So we've heard a lot tonight. And so we either need to decide to hope this driver's phone, we shouldn't sleep on this, right? We're talking about it again, or tonight, decide what we think we should do as a next step. Knowing the timing that joke is outlined to us tonight. So why don't we discuss that?
Can we just review the timeline piece that January date and March date?
Thank you. And I I thought all the comments were appropriate from the public. And I respect their positions. It may come across that we had, the fire department's not really happy with dispatching, that that's not the case. So I just, I and I appreciate the 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 candid, the honesty of everybody that spoke, even from other towns, so. It's important that we do something. My recommendation is don't decide tonight. The timeline is that, you know, there's a meeting, a grant workshop in January, that I would hate to not have any decision in December, because I think the other towns, if they are continuing to move forward, it would be unfair for us to go. Keep on going, we're not sure what we're gonna do. You know, I will speak to the representatives from each of the communities from that we're on the, on this working group, and tomorrow, just don't know how this went tonight. And I think that not sleep on it, but just think about what you think is the the best approach. I I believe Chief Newell and I believe that that citizens deserve better. I think the police and fire deserve better. I think the dispatchers that work here deserve better. So whatever we do, we have to commit to it. And I I would hate, I don't wanna make this a two-year, a five-year process. Not as short as dispatcher made it, but you know, I have a timeline too. And I would hate to see this drag out because that we need some substantial remedies to strengthen it and make it more reliable and more appropriate, I guess. So if if it's up to you, I I would think that maybe if there's a meeting in the beginning of after Thanksgiving, but in the beginning of December, be able to let us know what you would like us to do, both Chief, Newell and I. We will accept your decisions. And but at some point, we need to work on this. And I would hate to go into the budget season knowing that we're not gonna do regionalization, but we're not, we don't have any plan for strengthening our own dispatch. Because next year, we're here at the same times, talking about the same stuff. And I don't think that's fair or or appropriate for the community or or dispatchers or the police department.
But let's reiterate the timeline. So you got to March third or so to actually submit the grant request, and either we'll include an interview, an IMA with it, or a soft letter from the four towns, which would probably result in less money than the IMA. So that's kind of the early way to year. So you can do it. So March twenty-three, March twenty-four, right? The thing that troubles me most about everything that occurred tonight is one thing specific that the young lady from Hopkinton and Mr. Whitaker told us, which is it doesn't sound like necessarily other, at least to the towns, are as far along as we are. So I think we've got to end up the process tonight to at least see where they stand. And it may be Mr. Purple needs to start reaching out to his counterparts and towns. So we really understand. I mean, she said that he's like, we're talking, he doesn't know anything about this, which and then Mr. Whitaker said, the dispatchers in Rapid know nothing about this. So
Which changes the economics, actually. Also on the timeline, if by March, you need to submit an IMA or not, you can't just, you would need to get agreement from three other towns. That would take a long time. But I mean, that's why this model looked like it was pretty fleshed out already.
And that's why the and that's why the process is, you can't submit a grant without knowing what your budget is, what your needs are. So there's no way would I agree to try to work and submit a grant in February, March. It doesn't make sense because I think it would only be fair if we're gonna move this level with the other communities to know earlier than later, what is, what are the priorities? What are the grant requests? You can't just put in a blanket request, you want five million dollars. It has to be for specific things. So to be fair to the other communities. And to the dispatcher from Hopkinton, I don't know what their chief or their departments has shared. I don't know what the Grafton community has shared with their dispatchers. I can only tell you that I reached out to representatives of all the communities, and we were told that they're all committed to moving forward. I know the Hopking Board Selectmen took a same position as you. I don't know if that's been communicated or not, or how. But I can just tell you that I would not bring this to you, and Chief Newell wouldn't bring it to you tonight or last month, if we didn't get a commitment that everybody's still trying to move forward. But again, I think at some point, we have to decide what this is for everybody's sake. And mostly for the public, cuz the public are the ones that call nine-one-one and move us up and and get us moving, so.
But you said earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if we aren't going to submit for this grant cycle, you would hate to see us go through a whole another year with nothing done locally, okay? But then I thought you said a minute ago, you don't see how we're gonna get this done this February or March?
No, I meant that if you asked, if you requested us, it made no decision till February or March. And go, oh, you have March to submit your grant. I will not do that. Because there's no way we could prepare an appropriate grant with with less time, with a deadline, saying that you have to figure everything out in less time. We need more to, if we're gonna move forward with this, we need to know and have as much time to prepare for that grant.
So
does that make sense?
Okay, what's specific, cuz the grants could cover things like acquiring a building.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where I was going at. So if, let's say you were in a position where you were submitting an application for a grant in March, but would would it be for more consultants to 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 get
Could it be a director to start moving the process of director?
Okay.
I think you said that's one of the things that would qualify, a director to start moving it forward, similarly what Foxer did. They brought in the guy that applied for our grants. I can't think of his name, and I apologize.
But I'm saying that any appropriate grant that I've ever done is not done close to the deadline, I'm sure. And I think it would only be fair to all parties involved that if we're gonna do this, we need to work on the grant earlier than later. If the decision is, chief, both chiefs, this is not something we can support, we're not gonna do this, we're gonna commit to strengthening our own dispatch, then we need to know that too. And I would like to, I'm supposed to submit a budget next week. So I I think it would be only fair for all parties, including our mutually partners, that we have some direction one way or the other, so.
But I think it's key to get it, if Mark will check with his counterparts and chief, you check with yours as well, and kinda get a better read of
To me, that's crucial, as far as a critical path here. I think we really gotta make sure counterparts, the other towns, where they are.
But you also have to realize that and I appreciate this, and I think this is important, we do this. But if we all, we're not gonna do an IMA if not all four towns. I mean, we're not gonna enter into an IMA with three of the towns if not everybody's involved, ready to do it.
Which could be the forcing mechanism here. It seems to me that it can keep our options open. We can do that by pursuing the IMA with the other three towns, and seeing if we can find a deal that everybody seems to be general.
Cuz if the other three towns, or any of them say, granted, but we're not doing the IMA, then that answers the question, right? I mean, we'll do, I think it's due diligence that we reach out again to the communities, but I think that's, they also need to know what we're doing.
Right. Right.
I think this is Mr. Purple's job to
Andrew has a question. Yeah, just just a another timing consideration. So it sounds like you're looking for us to make a decision about being further committed. Then if we are, then IMA versus letter about test station. IMA is a higher level of commitment, more money. But it is, in terms of what you would have could apply for to put in a grant in March. It seems like the the benefit of that letter about test station is it's just a, it's just a letter. It's pretty simple. And that the IMA, the IMA, now you have just from my experience so far, everything that involves a intermunicipal seems to be more complicated and slower. And um, no, that's the thing. It's not just so there's like file an IMA or submit one. You know, four different towns, there is a very good start, but it could get kind of slow, you know?
But it's a great, good test of people's serious intent. And if you if you try to proceed down the IMA track and figure out that looks to the two communities aren't interested. Then you have the option dropping back to the letter of attestation that people would be interested in that. Because I think that allows us to have a lot more detail about exactly what the structure would be, what it would cost, but the financial impact that each community would be. You can then compare that against the additional staffing locally and get a better picture of the the options there. And also, again, I think that it's useful to keep the Foxborough or other rec option on the table to see what that and why here, what would the cost of that be as well.
But again, I I caution that um, and based on the group that spoke tonight, I don't, I think that would also, that doesn't solve the issue of not wanting to go to try to keep it local.
Correct.
You know, so I I just and I I was all over that. I just think it gets very, I don't want to make it more complicated.
I certainly understand that. On the other hand, I think that this is a pretty important decision. It really is a long term choice here in a lot of ways, at least to reinvest locally. And given the technology investment there, I think we're sort of committed to that for at least the next technology cycle, if you will, here. So that might be five to 10 years or so. So it seems to me that looking at all the options, uh, even though each one has pluses and minuses, no perfect option that I see on the table here, but having the complete picture, because I personally would find helpful to have at least a reasonable view of as we are pursuing the IMA to see if other towns are equally interested in that or not.
Right now, I can tell you that as far as I've been informed, the other three communities are not interested in a different rec.
I understand, I understand that.
Joe, the letter of attestation still has to be pretty specific, though, as far as what we are asking, but we can't just say we want X amount of dollars. We may not have an IMA, but we've still gotta be very specific about what we're asking for, right?
So the letter of attestation basically is, and there's a, if you go onto the State Now website right now under information for call centers and to be the F Y twenty three grant, the very end is a template for a letter of attestation. And all the letter of attestation is, is basically the town manager, the town A, saying to the executive director of the State nine one department that they are willing or interested in exploring the either joining an existing rec or in your case, forming. There's no kind of, to do that will need X amount of dollars, because that's what's gonna come in your grant application.
Okay.
Okay, just to be clear. So I get that part as far, okay, so in the grant application that goes with the letter of attestation, we still are gonna be asking for specific
Yes, you still will be not asking.
Four towns have to agree to what that is. So I mean, there's four select boards here, four town councils. Um, there's a lot of work to be done here, I think, for either submission.
Right, yeah, which is why we need to do it quickly here.
And so then, if you if there were four towns just had a letter of attestation on IMA and the grant was for the natural first step was to have a executive director, that just seems odd to you haven't made the decision to go and actually form a IMA yet, but you wanna hire a person who's gonna try to recruit people to work for uh, a new district, but you haven't even really committed to the new district yet.
Just by the IMA, it sounded to me like a better choice as a first step, because again, you're better positioned for the grant, higher in the priority structure, and you've got to do most of the rest of the work anyway, it sounds like.
Is there anyone that, as of this moment, does not want to at least go to the next step as far as pursuing the possibility of regionalization? Has anyone been persuaded tonight they'd rather stay locally? Um, are we still on the path? We want to look at all options here, including regionalization?
I I still am, just because again, like the the point I made earlier, I think I made this at the last time. I'm curious what other people think about it. Even if we were to significantly increase the budget. And there would be the money, would we be able to hire what we need and then and then have good retention so that we, long term, South Borough could build? It seems unclear to me.
Yeah, the lady from Hockington said that they've had that experience and given that there is adequate staffing, they've had successful staff.
But then two full time and a lot of, and a lot of part time and a full time communication. So it actually would be even more than, more more resource committed, right?
But that could be that.
Again.
Hi, everybody. Mr. Danny, just to answer your question, I think under new leadership, uh, the new role of of me that I've been put in as a lead dispatcher and, you know, expanding with everything, I don't think you're gonna have that problem.
Because you think with two people there is gonna be a better job? Because that's what young lady from Hockington said.
Yep, absolutely, and 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 we uh, like I said, rectified the um, face scale, those contracts I bought and kind of in the middle. So uh, to answer your question, uh, no, I don't think there've been any problems.
So I I also think, though, if we were to look at this, I would want to see by hour of day, the number of calls that are coming in over the last year or so, and see what financial justification there is to have that staffing model based on our call volume. So we know Hockington has a higher call volume and then look at ours. So I I do, I I think, go ahead, Chief.
I say, I don't think that's an appropriate approach.
Okay.
And the reason is, even in the national standards, it's not on call volume. It because the roles, um, since we've been here, there's been, I I turn my thing off, right? So I don't have this, but please call. I know this has not been a fire. You can't, you keep, it's very challenged, and that's why I think in the study, they say you have to have minimum two, that's the standard.
Yeah.
So it's not based on call volume and time of day, because unfortunately, in our experience, and the dispatchers can say this is, I don't know when the next multi-unit, multi uh, agency call is gonna be. And um, now if we're talking three or four dispatchers on at a time and modeling three, in like the study was looking at, oh, night versus day versus midnight. There is some model for that, but it never really drops below two. So I I don't think that's a a a an appropriate application of the staffing model.
Kyle, I I think you're the one that said this, but you're, so when somebody said tonight, none of us are dispatchers, totally correct, right? We have not been dispatchers. So we have not set in your, walking your shoes at all, for sure, which always helps when you're trying to do things like this. So just don't get mad at this question, but if over 10 years, um, and this is a really exaggerated example, over 10 years, you have one time where you needed two dispatchers because of whatever happened, multiple calls or complicated calls. Is it worth um, adding a second person for the one time in 10 years that you needed?
Um, so I I think I think what your question is not really completely accurate, but when you're talking about having two dispatchers, it's coming in combining everything, like Dave said, you have the radio, the phone, and um, you know, the computer system. There is redundancy when it comes to nine one one. If for some reason I didn't get the phone, it goes to Hockington. All nine one one calls are answered. Nothing goes unanswered. When you're talking about the two dispatchers, you know, yes, there are some times when we do plan for storms, we know they're coming, we'll plan for two. I I think it's a good idea, you know, like I said, it, you know, that's just kind of how you work. And if I may, I can tell you that in the last week, we've needed two dispatchers.
I gave you a crazy example.
Right, this is not every, it's not every once every 10 years. And I I think all these dispatchers can attest that there's a single dispatcher that when you have police and fire units rolling to incidents and have even two or one child that that which was an example, which happened in the last 72 hours of a child not breathing, that you can't say, well, that's the only time you need two dispatchers. I mean, it's happening on a frequent basis and and I think Chief uh, Newell said, this is just our current dispatch is doing your own work. It's not, it's it's more than you should be doing, because it's it's you're, something's missing. Something's going to get missed, and it's not the fault of the dispatchers, it's the fault of the system we have. And there's too many incidents on a two-frequent basis or two separate incidents that are involved that uh, it's a police incident happening and a fire incident happening. Okay, and I I said this in the beginning, you can't have interrupted EMD. You can't have somebody put you on hold when you're having a problem. And you can't not have a dispatcher answer you either from a fire call, a police call, when you need to make a critical communication. So I don't think it's fair, and I it's not even a best practice nationally to have one just anything.
And I think to Chelsea's question, I think it's in addition to the number of calls, I think of it as having a complexity component. A call is not a call, is not a call. And then there's a timing, slight overlap issue in terms of, you know, calls come in, and calls come in that are overlapped or sequential, and it it makes a difference in terms of staff that needed to handle. I doubt that we have the data structure to be able to actually produce that data. I I'm surprised to read calls by complexity of down calls.
I can do it by sign, how many simultaneous posts.
Yeah, but all those things, but I guess my gut says that there is enough of that overlap to make it a real challenge to cover with one person.
So.
I'm just gonna close with saying, you guys keep saying it's not about money, it's not about money. Please come in the dispatch center before we make a decision, please. I will give you a tour, I will sit down with you and show you everything. It's not fair that you guys are going down to Semrec and pouring that facility and trying to make a decision. You need to come in South. I'll let this.
Hi, Shannon Casey, dispatcher in Hockington. And originally, I just had a very quick question, because I worked overnight last night, I've only slept three hours and it's been a long night here, right? So I did just have a quick question. I asked Kyle, and my question was, do the residents vote on this or is it you guys? And he told me the residents don't vote, it's up to you. Hockington, the select board members just found out about most of these details and the study last week. So like you're asking where the other towns stand. Again, Hockington's select board members just found out about the study, the details last week. Residents don't even know that this is happening. So how are any of our towns making a decision for the residents when the residents don't even know? You know, it affects the residents most. They're the ones that are getting the services from us, right? So.
Residents do vote on the budget ultimately, so that's a final control point. If the residents decide that whatever the select board decides here is not acceptable, residents could in fact not support funding for whatever we might decide, so that is a check in the process.
So tell me who's the first, um, you know. So your colleague said, select board didn't didn't know anything. You think they at least last week found out about it? So we're gonna, we're gonna talk to her, um.
Because we met with one of them last week and we gave her the study, which she had never seen before. And we went through all these different pros and cons about it, and she was shocked, honestly, um, because she had not heard of it yet. And we're now meeting with other select board members, but it's like you guys are trying to make a decision like right now about whether to, whether to continue.
We are just trying to understand whether, number one, we want to continue discussing this and then what our next steps are. So there's no decision being made tonight as far as whether to, I mean, we can't, we don't know what the other towns want for sure. So thank you for coming, though. This has been helping, thank you for coming, I've been up all night.
Was addressed at the October meeting that the town was going to continue in this investigation of moving forward in the study. The details were not discussed in that meeting. To clarify, so they were made aware that Hockington was involved in the potential of regionalizing with the other towns. They were not given details.
That's it, that's what I get, I guess.
They talked about the study, the, is it all the study?
I can't speak to another town that has done.
We've just, we've been here, what, three, four and a half hours, four hours, so we're gonna cut off the public comment right now and decide what we want to do as far as our next step goes. Okay, so it sounds like we at least want to continue discussing regionalization. So I'm looking at four, or it's not, yes, right? Um, no decision tonight. Uh, it sounds to me like the next step is truly to ask Mark to start to reach out to the other three towns and understand exactly where they have this process. Yeah, I mean, I don't see how it's going. So you, so right, Chief, so you and Mark sit down, whatever, but based on what occurred tonight, I I think we've got to do that.
Two things, one, can we do an IMA? Is there interest in that, the other town? If so, what might it look like? Second, in parallel, Chief, if we decide not to do that, what does it mean in terms of the budget for next week's edition? And uh, you know, think seriously about what that consequence is as well.
I agree, Sam, on the IMA piece, but if if these other towns aren't even discussing it, they're they're nowhere near.
Really, I don't see the questions. You want to do an IMA, the questions, where are you? You know, where are you in this process?
Push them on deciding, because again, you know, three of them drop out and very different issues.
Then as Mark come back to us on six, which is our next regular meeting and report to us what he has found out from the then we have a little bit of basis to understand what we might be able to do and not do at the time.
But again, if I were in the chief's position, I'd be interested in thinking your boss's chief's position, what does that mean? For budget going forward, if we don't do that would be, again, if there's a need to do something sooner rather than later, at least I'd be interested in seeing what those numbers look like. And it may be a difficult challenge in the current budget environment, but at least better to know what we.
I'll work for Chief Newell, but I I think it's a, would require a substantial investment.
Yeah.
In staffing to make sure we do the right thing.
But even ballpark estimate would be helpful to know.
And thank you for bringing it there. You were a wealth of knowledge and we appreciate you, we have a public.
I think you're doing your own thing here, you know, you need to hear, you can't just make a decision.
Thank you for sticking around.
And thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.